Good evening. I will call to order our January 28th, 2025 city council meeting. I am your mayor Brendan Kelfus. Leading us in the invocation tonight will be Bishop Terrence Hudley of the Place City of Miracles. And following the invocation, I will lead you all in our flag salute. So if the bishop wants to come up? Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Shall we pray? Our Turner God, we thank you for another opportunity this day, and we're blessed by being here on tonight. We come to you now, our heavenly Father, in prayer for this great city of Temecula, asking you to bless this city and all the officials in this council meeting on tonight. Lord, allow your face to shine on these servants in this community and be gracious to all. We pray for your divine presence and direction during this city council meeting because you are with us. We pray that this meeting focuses on the business and affairs of this great community of the city of Temecula. And God, we also request a prayer for all of the neighboring cities here in Southern California that has been affected by, oh, God, the firestorms and, God, their lives have been changed. And so, God, we pray for our neighboring cities and for those officials of those cities. So bless this meeting on tonight. It's in your son Jesus' name we pray, and we shall say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop.
Yes, thank you.
If you can all place your right hands over your heart and repeat after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Kelfus.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here. We will start off with our presentations, and if Mr. Peter Thorson can meet me down at the podium, it would be greatly appreciated. Today's presentation from Mr. Thorson here is we are presenting him with our 35-year, which is, we discussed earlier, one of one. Mr. Thorson here is our longest-standing employee of the city of Temecula, and we have been so honored to have you as our city attorney. We're looking forward to the next 35 years. I know my colleagues would love to have some words for you here.
Wow, that's beautiful. Very nice.
If Councilmember Stewart wants to start us off?
All right. Well, me and Matt are probably the senior members who've been with you the longest, and the thing I've appreciated about you the most is you're pretty no-nonsense. If we start talking about something, you go, eh, time to stop that. So, you know, and I totally appreciate that. Yeah, you've been an amazing city attorney for all these years, and like you said, I hope we get you a few more. So, thank you.
Well, Peter, yeah, we've been here a long time together, and not 35 years, but at least a good portion of that, and I'm happy to have been able to work alongside you. I know there were a couple instances during council meetings where you gave me some good advice and some sage words and sort of sternly used my middle name. And you know what? There's I have had the opportunity to work with a lot of cities and a lot of attorneys over the years, but, you know, Temecula is incredibly lucky to have you. Not just your institutional knowledge, but your knowledge of, you know, what municipal law really means and what it means to run this organization, this city, has made us the success we are. You're a pillar of Temecula, and, you know, cannot thank you enough for being part of our community.
Thank you.
Well, Peter, I just kind of want to mimic what everybody else has said. You've always kept us out of trouble, and, you know, if we're veering down a wrong path, you make sure to bring us right in boundary. So I just want to thank you for all that you've done for us, all the knowledge and wisdom that you've poured upon myself and I know the rest of the council and staff. So, thank you, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Yeah, Peter, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you as a council member of the last six years. I know if I go into a subcommittee meeting and you're there, it's going to be a good meeting. So I always look forward to that. I look forward to seeing you on second and fourth Tuesdays of every month to, you know, not only talk about the things that are important to our city, but just personal things. And I value your opinions and your advice. And I can only imagine, you know, I've been, like I said, here with you for six years, what you've seen in the other 29 years in our city, and you've watched it grow and also helped shape our city as well. So I certainly can't thank you enough for everything that you've done for our city. And I'm just excited for the one of one, and we were talking earlier, like, what does the 40th pin look like? So get thinking what you want your 40th pin to look like. Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, I feel like we're saying goodbye to Peter. So I want to make something clear. You're not going anywhere. No, I've had the privilege, Peter, of working alongside you, with you for nearly, well, I guess in my case, 30 of your 35 years. It's been an amazing run, and I just, on behalf of the entire executive team, you're the finest city attorney I've ever had the privilege of working with. You know how to get us from point A to point B. You direct us, you guide us to not step in it. You know how to get us to a yes if, indeed, you can sense that we want to, and of course, if it's lawful and ethical. But you really are skilled, talented, and the city of Temecula is so much better off because of the 35 years that you've served here. You've staved off and saved the city millions of dollars, and that sometimes goes unknown because it's the work that you and I do behind the scenes many times, protecting the city's interest. And so, thank you. Congratulations on 35 years. And no, you're not going anywhere. This isn't goodbye. So congratulations, my friend.
Thank you.
We would love to have you say a few words.
Sure. Well, can I have an extension of the three minutes, please? No, I really appreciate this, and I really appreciate all the kind words that you've said. That means a lot to me. The city has, I'm part of a team. The city from day one has had exceptional council members, exceptional staff members, and the city has just gone continuously up and up and up. And, you know, it's all of those people that have made the city of Temecula the great city that it is today. I'm very proud to be a part of that. My work here has been challenging. It's been interesting, but I've loved every minute of it. And it's just been a great, great opportunity for me. And so, again, I'm most appreciative, and I've enjoyed it. And again, thank you all for your very kind words. Thank you.
If my colleagues want to come down and join for a picture? We'll take a picture here for you. Sorry, you're the main attraction.
Oh, yeah.
It's beautiful.
All right, continuing on here, we'll move on to our board and commission reports, and we'll start off with our planning commission by Mr. Bob Hagel. Oh, no, we have Mrs. Linay Trulie Trejo. You're a little prettier than Bob until Bob.
I hope so. All right. I'm here tonight to report on our last meeting of January 15th, and these are our commissioners. We have a new commissioner that has joined us since Adam Ruiz retired from our commission, and that is Mark Watson. And he was a previous planning commissioner at Escondido, I believe. And so we look forward to getting to know him. And we are, last meeting, we'll go to the next slide. Well, we selected our chair and vice chair, so it's no longer Bob. Bob's not here. So I am the chair for 2025, and vice chair Watts was also selected. So I'm honored to do that for this year. Next slide, please. So on this last meeting, and this is just a kind of a rendition. It's not what the final product will look like, but we looked at allowing off-site signs for the Temecula Auto Mall along the median, since people are having kind of a hard time finding where each of those dealerships are. So this will hopefully, and it will be, this is, like I said, this is just kind of a rendition, and you can see the height of it with that person standing next to it. It gives you kind of an idea of how tall it will be. And we gave a few suggestions, and so we're looking forward to see what that ends up looking like, but that will be coming back to us at some time. But we voted on amending Title 17 in the municipal code to allow for these. So that was our vote there. And our next meeting will be not until February 19th, and we will be having a special meeting before our meeting, Brown Act Conflict of Interest Training with our city attorney, Maricela. And so we're looking forward to that, and kind of a refresher, especially with some new planning commissioners. So one other thing I wanted to share, I had an opportunity last week at 5:30 in the morning to be a part of the pick count point in time, and that was a real educational experience. And I appreciated that opportunity to be able to do that. I rode with Lacy and a couple of other people from the city. So I went as a planning commissioner, and we met some people. And one thing that I learned from it, because this has kind of been a passion of mine, a concern of mine in our city, is that they need more help. And they do a great job of keeping our city safe and helping those that want to be helped, but they need more help. So that was my perspective on that. But I appreciate the opportunity to be able to do that. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from my colleagues?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to our Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission with Commissioner Crystal Pastorian.
Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm here tonight to represent our ready commission. So as you see, we are misting Mr. Eric Faulkner, but we are so proud, and I know you acknowledged him previously of his work that he did here on our commission. Our commission, as you know, is here to review and make recommendations to you as a governing board on topics of diversity and inclusion within the city, events, services, programs, and policies enhanced for our community relations. So our last meeting was January 9th, and during that meeting, we as well selected our chair and vice chair. So I was very fortunate to be sitting in this position and selected by my peers. And our vice chair is Mr. Adam Eventov, who is here tonight supporting. Hi, thank you. So we are very excited about our upcoming year in 2025 and what we plan to do. So we reviewed projects that are projected for 2025 related to the eight proclamations, budget, general plan update, and of course, a fan favorite, Culture Fest, which has been very well attended over the last several years. The commission also received an update regarding the annual board, committee, and commission recruitment, as well as selection process related to joint meetings. And the city councils will consider both of those items tonight. So we're looking forward to seeing how that shapes out. And then, of course, lastly, the commission discussed training and education opportunities for the commission and the public this year. So we're looking forward to seeing where that leads. Our next meeting, we are very excited to hold on February 13th, 6:00 p.m. here. We invite everybody who's here tonight and anyone else to come out and celebrate as we kick off our African-American Heritage Month. So Temecula has a lot of really great opportunities to celebrate that, and we're looking forward to starting that on February 13th. So, thank you. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our public safety report by our chief of police, Chief Regali.
Well, good evening, Mayor Kelfus, city council, and city executive team. It's a pleasure to be joining you tonight. I'm very pleased to be back at the Southwest Station and to be working in the city of Temecula again. I'm equally grateful to be working alongside the committed and talented group of professionals that comprise the city executive team. This evening, our discussion will focus on an emerging safety concern that is impacting our community and directly involves the youth who live and visit the city of Temecula. The e-bike and e-motorcycle wave appears to have arrived in Temecula in earnest, and we are beginning to see a rapid uptick in troubling behavior and trends with use of these machines in all areas of our city. Our robust city camera system provides the video proof of dangerous, even reckless navigation of these e-machines on our city streets, the sidewalks, parks, even inside of our mall. Shortly, I will ask Lieutenant Vic Pearson to share his thoughts on this topic and a few videos, so you can see firsthand what I am referring to. Following that, I will briefly touch on some of the actions the city, sheriff's office, and the Temecula Valley Unified School District are taking in order to address e-bike safety. As local government officials, I believe, our best approach is to first focus on training, education, and voluntary compliance with existing laws and city ordinances. Rightfully, our priority is the safety of our youth operating these e-machines, as well as pedestrians and the motoring public. However, when those meaningful efforts fail to achieve the desired outcome, we must demonstrate our ability and willingness to take enforcement action. Ignorance or blatant disregard of the laws cannot be tolerated, and as unpleasant as receiving a ticket or having your e-motorcycle towed away might be, it may also save the child from serious injury or worse. I cannot overstate the very critical role parents play in ensuring their child's safety when operating these machines. This includes really understanding the type of machine you have purchased for them and whether it's even street legal. Realize that many of these machines can easily be modified to go significantly faster than advertised, and instructions are courtesy of social media platforms. Also, monitoring your child's social media for invites to seemingly benign meetups at local parks or shopping centers referred to as write-outs, which is really code for all manner of traffic chaos, with 30 to 50 riders descending into and onto the city streets simultaneously, splitting traffic lanes, running signals and stop signs, blocking intersections, et cetera, and then fleeing from the police when we are inevitably called to the area. Sadly, we have learned of recent traffic collisions involving e-machines and motor vehicles with tragic results. I was made aware of one last night in South Temecula, which resulted in a juvenile being transported to a local hospital for injuries sustained in that collision. Another such accident recently involved a juvenile who suffered life-altering injuries after colliding with a motor vehicle at significant speed and being thrown from the e-motorcycle they were riding. Also recently, a juvenile from a neighboring city died from injuries sustained while riding an e-motorcycle and colliding with a motor vehicle. Please know when these tragic incidents occur, law enforcement will conduct an exhaustive investigation to determine fault and other significant mitigating factors which led to or contributed to the collision. In some cases, parents of a child injured in these types of collisions could face a criminal referral for child endangerment pursuant to Section 273A of the California Penal Code, depending on the totality of the circumstances. We will evaluate and take into consideration the age of the rider, time of day, road conditions, machine street legal or modified, lack of safety equipment, no adequate parental supervision or oversight, et cetera. It's imperative that parents understand their potential culpability when their child is injured operating an e-machine in violation of law. I know that's a lot, so I'm going to pause right there for a minute, and I'm going to invite Lieutenant Pearson to come forward and share his thoughts, and also share these videos that I referenced earlier.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city team, city residents, good evening. Tonight, I want to talk about a growing trend that's taking over our streets, e-bikes and e-motocycles. These eco-friendly, cost-effective modes of transportation are transforming how we commute, offering an efficient alternative to traditional vehicles. With fewer emissions and a more affordable price tag, it's no surprise that e-bikes and e-motocycles have become incredibly popular, especially among young people. However, as this trend gains momentum, so does a concerning issue, the increased number of juveniles operating e-motocycles recklessly on our city streets. We've all seen the news reports from other cities, or perhaps even witnessed it firsthand here in our city. Young individuals performing dangerous stunts, weaving in and out of traffic, speeding, and not wearing proper safety gear. These stunts, while thrilling to some, present a serious threat to their safety and to the safety of everyone else on the road. What's more troubling is that many of these young riders lack the maturity, experience, and judgment needed to handle such powerful machines responsibly. E-motocycles can reach high speeds, and when misused, they become a danger not only to the rider, but to pedestrians, cyclists, and other drivers as well. I'm now going to play some videos. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this is December 28th, 2024. It's just a few days after Christmas at 5:00 in the evening on Old Town Front Street. You can see the riders are going in oncoming traffic. Next slide, please. This is a little bit further down the street, same night. And mind you, all vehicles on the roadway, whether they're e-motocycles, e-bikes, cars, they have to yield to stop signs. And in a moment, you're going to see a few more motorcycles come down the center of the roadway. Thank you. Next slide, please. So this is after law enforcement was alerted to what was going on in Old Town, what we just saw, and they had deputies looking for them, and this is where they rode out to. This is Rancho Cal and Jefferson. And I want you to look across the street. You're going to see two bike riders come through against a green light. And judging by the sound of everybody in the room, everybody's just as concerned as we are. Next slide, please. This is January 20th. It was a Monday. So it's Martin Luther King Day, I believe. But they did a ride-out that day, and this is what they did. They went right there against a red and just shot across the street on Rancho Cal and Margarita. So they went southbound on Margarita right there. Next slide, please. This is them coming back, same group. They're going to come north on Margarita, and they're going to stop right here at the intersection. Got a few stragglers back there. They're catching up, though. So you're going to see the riders, they're going to wait right here at the intersection. And then, when the traffic stops going eastbound on Rancho Cal, that's when they're going to make a decision to change direction, and you'll see how it impacts the people making the eastbound turn onto Rancho California Road.
Also, I'll add here, while we're watching that, one of the other things that we see occurring now is somebody in these groups, particularly when law enforcement arrive in the area, the riders will all take off. Somebody will stay back to record, so that those videos can be posted to their social media pages later on.
Next slide, please. So this is Ronald Reagan Sports Park. They're going to come out here onto Rancho Vista. You can see one of the riders is actually in the oncoming traffic lane. He's about to move a little bit.
Not to interrupt you, Vic, but that last motorcycle looks like an actual, like, two-stroke, like dirt bike.
There is one of them that is a dirt bike.
Yeah, it's like not even electric.
Next slide, please. So this is a reference guide. I have every intention on posting this on our Southwest RSO social media page, just to get out to the community, so that the parents can see these things. But a lot of what you saw just now are the Serrons, maybe a couple of the Tellarias, a Segway, E-Ride Pro. You can see the models are listed below. The top speed of these machines is for, at least the Serron right here, at 68 miles an hour. And it was, I think, the low end is 46. And you can see the peak motor watts. Very strong machines. Next slide, please. And then, this is your classification chart. So I wanted to just point these things out. When I reviewed the surveillance video that you guys just watched, I didn't see any of these Class 1, 2, or 3 e-bikes. What I saw were the electric motorcycles, a dirt bike, which is a gas-powered motorcycle. And that was about it. And maybe the moped motorized bicycle. And you'll see some of those smaller ones out there. There may have been one of those in there. But you'll see, if you go to applicable laws, the Class 1, 2, and 3, helmet required, helmet required, age and helmet required. And then you get into the electric motorcycle or the moped motorized bicycle, even the motorized scooter, and you start talking about license being required, the different California vehicle codes that apply to both the motorized scooter as well as the electric motorcycle off-highway. So if a juvenile is riding an e-motorcycle in our city, and they don't have a license with an M1 endorsement, we can tow that. They can be cited. And if they pop a willy, I don't know if you guys saw that in the video, but a lot of them do. They ride in that position. That is a qualification right away for reckless driving, and they can be arrested and filed charges with our, depending on their age, it could be if they're an adult, it'll go to Riverside County Court. If they're juvenile, it'll go to juvenile probation. I got a few more remarks before I close out and hand it back over to Captain Regali. The simple fact is that the thrill of these machines can lead to poor decision-making. Whether it's racing down narrow city streets or performing stunts in crowded areas, these reckless actions endanger lives. Even though e-bikes and e-motocycles don't rely on fossil fuels, their misuse on city streets can have far-reaching consequences far beyond just environmental impact. This is where we, as a community, need to step in. Parents, it's Parents, it's crucial that you are actively involved in what your children are doing, especially when it comes to the use of such powerful equipment. These machines may seem fun and exciting, but they come with significant risks. We need to remind our young ones about the importance of responsible riding, proper safety gear, and above all, the dangers of engaging in reckless behavior. I encourage parents to have open conversations with their children about the responsibilities that come with owning, riding an e-bike or e-motorcycle. If your child expresses interest in riding, take the time to educate them about safe practices, the laws in place to protect everyone on the road, and most importantly, the potential consequences of unsafe behavior. Let's work together to keep our streets safe for everyone. By staying involved and offering guidance, we can ensure that the excitement of these innovative vehicles doesn't come at the cost of safety. It's time to turn this trend into something positive and ensure that both our kids and our communities stay protected. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Pearson. So yeah, so we could, you know, read all these different things all night long, but I think the video really kind of tells the tale and just how concerning this is. I will wrap up with just, I want to touch briefly on some of the ongoing efforts for education and safety that, that we are currently undertaking. So our e-bike safety efforts are highlighted under three categories. The first one is public education and outreach. Number two is municipal code updates and enforcement of laws. And number three is infrastructure projects designed to promote safe riding. Beginning in 2024, the City of Temecula has engaged the public with training and education materials through press releases, monthly e-blasts from the city manager's office, social media posts, and links on the city webpage to safety videos. There's a wealth of valuable information that already exists and is available to the public. The city and sheriff's office are collaborating to provide in-person e-bike training classes. The first such class was held earlier this month. Over 50 children and parents were in attendance. We will continue this effort as it was well-received and well-attended. The Temecula Valley Unified School District and the sheriff's office are collaborating to provide mandatory safety classes for all students who are riding bikes to, e-bikes to and from school. City staff is evaluating current city ordinances and making recommendations to enhance enforcement efforts when needed. We are also evaluating some local Southern California beach communities' e-bike programs and ordinances for adaptation to our city where it makes sense to do so. Lastly, the City of Temecula continues to improve on our citywide bike lanes as well as our trail program, which allows for safe riding. In, in closing, I would just say it's my sincere hope that our continued collaboration and increased parental involvement will yield the safety results we are hoping to achieve. Lieutenant Pearson and I will be available for any questions that you might have following tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Lieutenant. I know all those videos were, were hard to watch, and we appreciate your strict enforcement of the city ordinances. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions?
I do have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for all that you guys are doing. I, I've seen the videos a little bit before, and I know it's not like you can chase these kids down because then the possibilities of even another accident can end up occurring. But just something, as I was watching those videos, possibly this is already in discussion, but number one, I know we have a couple e-bike local businesses in the area. Number one, are we talking to them and checking IDs or anything like that and/or sharing this information that maybe, hey, let's give this information out to the buyers? So that way, we can make sure that they are well-informed from that perspective. Somebody already knows. And also, I know I brought this up before behind closed doors, but also seeing if we can extend this out to private schools as well. I know a lot of it's coming from public schools, but just having had kids in private school myself, I know a lot of these kids do have these bikes. Having a child who's 15, I hear it all the time of these kids coming from, you know, Linfield, different schools. So are we moving forward in something like that as far as touching base with them as well?
Yeah, certainly, that's something that we can do and we should do, right? The, you know, the kids, you know, when they get together, it's kind of that mob mentality, right? And good kids, but they get together and when, once they get rolling, everybody's going to do it, right? And of course, their default setting is that nothing bad is ever going to happen. But you brought up an interesting point about the actual, the, the actual shops that are selling these machines, right? And what kind of requirements do they have to disclose as to whether or not the products that they're selling are even street legal or not? I was talking to Randy Joel about this earlier in the week, or last week, in one of the meetings, and talking about legislative, legislation that might fix some of that, where these businesses, the manufacturers, are required to disclose whether or not these machines. Because what we've heard from some parents when these things are being towed out from underneath their kids is, well, I didn't even know this wasn't legal, like, nobody ever told me that. And so, you know, shame on them for not doing their due diligence and finding out, but also there should be some accountability from the manufacturer's side and say, we will disclose. In fact, to the extent where they actually have to provide some sort of waiver to the, the parties purchasing those things to, to have them sign and acknowledge what exactly it is that they're purchasing and where it is or is not legally allowed to be operated.
Is that something that, I'm just thinking out loud, is that something that even as a local level that we can, I, I don't want to call it enforce, right? But in a sense of saying, hey, partner with us, let's, let's really work on this where you guys can still sell your bikes, do, you know, your due diligence to do your business, but at the same time, we want to keep our residents safe. Is that something that we can maybe look at and talk about and seeing how their response is? Or have, has there already been conversation with some of these businesses already?
Well, I think I'm going to defer to Peter on that.
I will, I will just jump in, too. I think the, probably one of your colleagues is going to mention this, but the Bike Temecula Valley Group does a lot of good work. They're great ambassadors for cycling here in the community, cycling the right way. And certainly, I think they have been a part of this conversation and will continue to be kind of part of that conversation, which extends to the bike shops and the things of that nature. So if it's not on our radar, I'll, I'll definitely look into it and make sure that it's something that we follow up on.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Captain Magali and Lieutenant Pearson, thank you for the presentation. Seeing those videos is certainly impactful, right? Like, we've seen them on social media, but I, I even felt like the silence of the video was really helpful in driving this home. This is a problem in our community, and I do think it is going to take some legislative action to actually, like, make this a little easier for cities to sort of deal with this. I also want to thank Lieutenant Pearson. This isn't just, you know, strictly like a middle school, high school issue. And we actually had an issue where an elementary school student had purchased one of these, his parents had purchased one of these bikes on Amazon most likely, and it was delivered to their house and this, you know, 10-year-old is riding an electric motorcycle to school. So I'm really, you know, it's disheartening at times because we've spent a, a lot of time and energy and money updating our bike lanes and trails, making it safer to bike and, and to be more active. This isn't that, though. This isn't, this isn't, this isn't, you know, recreational cycling, right? This isn't Bike Temecula Valley. This is, this is something completely different. And I really appreciate the, the effort we're going to, to sort of clamp down on this and end it. Because unfortunately, and we've said it before, someone is going, I mean, that rider was, was missed the car by that much, you know? Like, this is, this is something that's scary. And, and, and I'm, and I'm just really glad that we're taking the, the time to do this, this work to make sure that we protect, you know, the youth of the community, but the broader community at large. And this is just unacceptable. So I, the stance that we're taking, I think, is a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the, the video was excellent. I was actually in Old Town when that group came through on December 28th, and they literally blew through every single stop sign. They never stopped even once, doing wheelies right down the middle. I mean, it was just what the video, if I would have said it, most people said, nah, nah. But there it was in, you know, living color. So this is something I have a real passion for. I think this needs to have legislative approval. It literally, it needs to go through this process to, to take these bikes, whether they're e-motocycles or they're e-bikes that have been modified, which a lot of them do get modified. It's so easy to, to ungovern these bikes, and everybody knows that. You just YouTube it one second and you'll find it. So they go much faster than the Class 1, 2, 3. So basically, parents are buying lethal weapons for their kids, and they're putting it in the hands of these kids who really don't understand the rules of the road and putting not only themselves at danger, but the, the general public who is operating a motor vehicle 10 times the size and weight of that bike, 10 times, 100 times, you know? So it, it's, it's a super, super dangerous situation that we're kind of very limited on what we can do, what, because of the laws say they can ride them. And, but they got to obey the, the rules of the road, and they don't know the rules of the road. So how can they obey something they don't even know? And so, and even if they did know, go back to the mob mentality, once a couple of them start doing, they all start doing it. And I get it, I was a kid once. So, but it's, it's something that I think we, as a council, take very, very seriously. This is not, this is not a good thing. So I just wanted to reaffirm that.
Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, I just, so you were talking about some of the outreach programs, and, you know, that's probably the most important component of this, I think. With regard to the parents, you mentioned, you know, a lot of school outreach and all that. Are we trying to get with the school district, direct contact to the parents to say, hey, these are all the, you know, machines that are illegal to use and, and here's the risks and that kind of thing?
Yeah, we are working hand-in-hand with the school district to do that and bringing those classes to the, to the schools and providing them with that information. But yeah, that is a work in progress, and we'll continue to do that.
Yeah, and I think it's especially critical because I'm, you know, like you mentioned, I think all of the e-motocycles that were being used on city streets aren't allowed to be used on city streets.
Correct.
Understanding that. I mean, you know, so somebody's buying these, you know, for the kids. So part of it is the responsibility of the parents to understand what they're, what they're buying their children. But, you know, part of it is also just that education. Maybe they have no clue what, you know, what really is going on. So the more information we can get out there, I think, the better. Appreciate all the effort on, on doing that.
Thank you very much again, Captain Lieutenant. We will move on to public comments, but with non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have about five or six public comments. The first speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by James Phillips.
Welcome.
Hi. My name's Laurel Lamont, represent Upward Community, yada, yada, yada. We all know this speech. We have between 48,000 and 66,000 local workforce employees. When are you going to advocate for making the workforce a protected class so that we can develop housing specifically for our workforce? I likened you once to a monarchy. Matt, your excuse from this, you were not here and you are not part of that. And I called Aaron Adam a king or similar to, and I think you're more like pimps and you treat the local workforce like your hoes. We're good enough to service you, just not good enough to live amongst you. Classism is a local design. Left, right, and center are concerned about more housing, that housing being developed up on the hill. Nobody wants it because they don't want any more traffic. Their concerns are valid because it will create more traffic, because the local workforce cannot afford those homes. We design for commuters. $70 million was poured into that freeway expansion, but that's not going to solve traffic. It may alleviate it for a period of time. That's a fact. It will not solve it because we don't design for the community. We are your service workers. We should not be shamed for the employment because you want it. You want the Trader Joe's, you want the Costco, you want the grocery stores, you want the amenities. You want us here. Let us live here. Dive into HUD, our Affordable Housing System, and the way we design it, the way we develop it, it's broken. We are single parents, working full-time, raising boys without a co-parent, without fathers. We didn't have abortions. We're here. Make room for the housing. Stop excusing past councils and the design and the fact that you're already developed. Redevelop. Make room.
The next, the next speaker is James Phillips, to be followed by Samantha McGrath.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's James Phillips. Hang on a second. Let me play with this thing. The Riverside County General Plan Advisory Committee currently has an application to change 22 parcels, 410 acres, from rural residential to medium and high-density residential and an additional zoning of a mixed-use area. This parcel is located in the unincorporated area of Sage and is also centrally located in the Temecula Wine County, Country Influence area. Surprisingly, it also just happens to be about six miles away from the African's Winery. This hearing is scheduled for public comment on April 14th. A grassroots group of combined wine country and sage residents has formed to protest this large development, given the current rural and rustic nature of the area and the demand for services to support the additional housing, businesses, and transportation needs of such a development. A protest petition, both online and on paper, has so far generated over 700 signatures. We would like to ask the Temecula City Council to investigate the practicality of this application and issue a statement on the position of the council as to whether this application should be approved or denied. We would further ask that a representative of the City of Temecula attend the application hearing to ensure that the residents of the wine country and sage area are represented, represented before the Rivco Planning Commission. While this is technically a Riverside County Board of Supervisors issue, three years ago, the Temecula Wine Country Sphere of Influence was extended to the east of Temecula, to the boundary of Sage Road, by the Board of Supervisors, and this application will have a large impact on the rural nature of the wine country and sage. The Temecula Wine Country Influence was exerted two years ago when a moratorium on Airbnbs was levied. It was controversial then and will certainly be felt by the residents as an unfair practice to halt Airbnbs by the local residents, but still allow a non-resident developer to build large residential and business properties. We ask for the assistance of the Temecula City Council in this matter, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Samantha McGrath, to be followed by Margaret Meinkey.
Good evening.
Good evening. So City Council, everybody here, it's, I'm just here today to be proactive in addressing the City Council regarding the federal government's recent executive orders to target illegal immigration and roll out mass deportations. It's my hope that the Temecula Police Department, the Riverside Police Department, will continue what we've been doing and following state law and will not follow some unsettling trends that we've seen from at least one city in California of flip-flopping based on the executive administration when this was ruled a state issue many years ago and started to be implemented in 2018. The City of Temecula is a very safe place. I'm very active on messaging boards, on social media, and I haven't seen the community at large have safety issues or concerns related to immigrants or illegal immigrants in general. And so I really feel like the unnecessary presence of federal immigration and Customs Enforcement, that's already been seen around the area, being more locally collaborated with than is already legally collaborated with, would, would create unnecessary anxieties for our diverse community here. As we know, there's so many of us living here, there's, like they mentioned before, a lot of people moving into the city, welcome or not, but lots and lots more, lots of diversity. And I think it's important now more than ever that we keep state issues, state issues, that we protect all members of our community, and we do so by trusting local law enforcement to do their due diligence as they've been doing, and that we don't change what locally we have found to be important just because of what is happening on a larger scale, a federal scale. So I'm here to be proactive in that since things have been happening often. So I hope you hear me out.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Margaret Meinkey, to be followed by Gabriella Pleasant.
Welcome.
Thank you. Greetings to City Council and Mayor Kalfus. My name is Margaret Meinki, this is my friend Jennifer Poole. We're here tonight to introduce you to a local environmental group called the Temecula Valley Native Plant Network. Before I do that, I want to express my appreciation for everything you guys are doing in city government and city council. We moved here back in ninety-four, I think Mayor Kalfus was like three years old. We love this place, we enjoy it so much, and I brag about it all the time. I think it's the most wonderful city in the world. So thank you for all that you're doing. Back to business. The Temecula Valley Native Plant Network got started about two and a half years ago. I found out that the monarch butterfly was going extinct. Okay, that was a big deal for me, going extinct. What can we do? So we put together a group of friends and that morphed into a Facebook group. So we operate mainly on Facebook, which you're welcome to join. It's open to everyone, and that's where most people interact. And I also have an email list that has over three hundred people on it. Our Facebook has about eight hundred and fifty. So we are growing and we are expanding, trying to connect with all the environmental organizations in the area who are interested in helping the monarch butterfly. But anything you do with native plants, it benefits the insects and that benefits the birds. So my takeaway for you guys today is this biological triangle. You plant native plants, you're going to get insects, and you're going to get birds. So if you want more birds, you have to plant native plants. Okay, I want to leave you today with our unofficial theme song. Oh, give me a home where the butterflies roam, where the bees and the dragonflies play, where often is heard an encouraging bird, and the flowers are blooming all day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our last speaker for the evening is Gabriella Pleasant.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for allowing me to speak. My goal in coming tonight is not frightening actionable items for the city, but instead to bring to light an issue that I myself have dealt with, but also that I believe affects every member of our city. And that is the good intentions that the city has in addressing homelessness versus the effects of the reliability of those solutions. I have been in communication with the outreach program directors, and I have learned what those initiatives are, which I myself was not aware of. I have a lot more to learn. But I do have a pressing concern that our main solution for when a homeless individual is found within the city of Temecula is that the only emergency shelter is in Riverside County. I'm sorry, in Riverside, we are, Riverside County. Also, not only is the only shelter in Riverside County, but we do have a organization called Project Touch, which does help the homeless in our city. However, Project Touch is either underfunded and it is closed a lot of the time, or perhaps maybe there is not enough communication between Project Touch and other initiatives of the city. So my goal tonight is just to bring to mind, I know you have a whole packet of issues that you are dealing with right now. However, please keep in mind that the homeless in our city are the most in need. And I work graveyard shift, where I work right now is one of the only businesses that's open past eleven P M. So whenever it's raining, whenever it's cold, when people are hungry, because we don't have an emergency shelter, typically we have a lot of homeless people who come into where I work. The unfortunate thing about that is my workplace is not set up to be a shelter. So whether people become uncomfortable and we have to call non-emergency police, or whether those individuals are in need of greater care and we have to call, the officers who come by use a lot of city funds, and they can't really do anything except arrest the homeless person for trying to sleep, which isn't the solution, I think, that anyone here wants for our city. So again, thank you for listening, but I'm just here to kind of plant a seed in your minds that perhaps we need to reevaluate how we are addressing the homelessness within the city of Temecula. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes all public comments.
We will move on to City Council reports. We'll start off with Councilmember Schwenk.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a few slides tonight, so if you could put up the first slide for our our emerging artist mural project. All right, so we have a, uh, we've had this for quite a while now. I think we're going on three plus years of this Temecula mural project, and this program highlights the talents of Temecula's emerging artists. This month's mural, which will officially be unveiled tomorrow, Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at four P M, celebrates International Day of Women and Girls in Science and was painted by students at Great Oak High School. We're really excited to unveil this, uh, this new mural tomorrow, and we hope to see everyone at Sam Hicks Park to to support these young emerging artists with this wonderful mural of women and girls in science and STEM. So thank you. Next slide is Culture Days. So along the same lines, at the Temecula Valley Museum, we host every month, uh, different cultures at Sam Hicks Monument Park in front of Temecula Valley Museum. You guys can answer that or hang up one of those. It's in there somewhere. Getting close. Got it? I mean, I got to play into it, right? Like, like, there's no way I could keep going with that happening. Okay, so every month, uh, we celebrate different culture at Sam Hicks Monument Park in front of Temecula Valley Museum. This month, join us Saturday, February eighth, uh, from eleven A M. to one P M. To celebrate the rugged and nomadic culture of Mongolia. Culture Day is a perfect time for people of all ages to enjoy snacks, crafts, and music while learning something new. And final slide, a little bit closer to home. You may have noticed that our military banners in front of City Hall have been updated. I'd like to thank Mayor Protem Alexander, uh, who sits on the Military Subcommittee with me, where we went over some designs printed, um, uh, for our our new banner program, so we've updated them. I think they look really good, especially in in person, they look fantastic. So this is a free program, it's a great way to honor your active-duty military family member with a personalized recognition of their service to our country. And then for more details, you can go to temeculacca.gov slash military banners. That's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwenk. Mayor Protem Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor. If we can do the first slide, please, which is going to be on Care Solace. There we go, thank you so much. So we just want to do a little bit of, uh, end of the year view on the last, really, it's just about four months of us having the program here at Temecula. This has been something really near and dear to my heart, and it's just, it's a beautiful thing to see how we've been able to help our residents and businesses, nonprofits, to be able to get the mental health, behavioral needs that they're to be met for themselves. Since the beginning, Care Solace is on board since August of twenty twenty-four. They have handled over a thousand referrals and provided over seven thousand six hundred services. This service is available to everyone who works in the city of Temecula. Ninety-eight percent of the requests are successfully matched to care, meaning they have been able to find a provider for themselves to be able to get some type of care that they're needing. Uh, slide two. Each month, the number of people benefiting from this service increases. As we can see, obviously, from July to December, which is really only a few months, we really kind of started in late, uh, July, or late July. More and more people are utilizing these services, and to my knowledge, these don't even reflect also Temecula Valley Unified School Districts as well, who is also on their own Care Solace program as well. So they buy into their own package. So there are more individuals within our city limits who are really getting the help needed to be able to just continue to succeed. Uh, next slide, please. This here is just some observations of what they have seen. Depression and anxiety are the top two concerns across all age groups. Specifically, uh, specialty referrals are available, including addiction treatment and suicide prevention. Improved access to mental and behavioral health services help families and makes our community much safer. And the cost of this is just over two dollars per resident per year. So one of the things that I'm always interested in seeing is, as we are looking at the suicide and self-harm, that represents almost two percent of the individuals we've been able to help. So it's, there's a lot of need out there, and we're very interested in seeing, hopefully, the the stats coming from the Unified School District as well to kind of match and see how our city is doing. So I'm just very thankful for this program, I'm thankful for my my colleagues and staff to be able to put this up and be able to utilize this and see how the rest of the year goes, and if it's something we'd want to continue. But obviously, we're seeing a lot of success with this, so I just want to say thank you for that. Uh, the next slide we're going to talk about is, uh, the point in time count. Uh, myself also, five-thirty in the morning, it was cold, um, but I was very thankful we were in and out of the car. Uh, we had an opportunity, myself, Swag, and several others were able to go out and do this point time count. The city's homeless outreach and prevention team, core team, supported by R S O and Swag, conducted this point-of-time count on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, from five-thirty A M. to nine-thirty A M. Staff estimates that we counted approximately twenty-nine individuals experiencing homelessness within the city limits. The last pit count was in twenty twenty-three, so this is an, for us, it's an annual, uh, count that we do, with official count at being at thirty-five. Our census in November, which is more detailed, counted fifty individuals. Overall, the city's street exits continue to increase each year, even though the census and pit numbers decrease, the problem is growing, but we continue to improve our effectiveness at addressing it. So just to give everybody a little bit of idea, this isn't necessarily just to count how many individuals we have that live on our streets. One of the things that we had to do, which every individual that we encountered who was homeless, we actually went through an entire survey. So we had about twenty questions within that survey to kind of find out a little bit more of why they're there, how did they get there, what services are they needing, uh, you know, are they veterans? There's all, there's about twenty questions, and so it really gave me a perspective of seeing the type of individuals that are out on our streets, how they got there, why they're still there. And I'm so thankful that you actually came up to talk. And we'll tell you, I've had a heart all the time for these individuals who are out there. And over the years, having been out there with Swag and even doing this pit count, we know a lot of these individuals who are transients, I'm finding and everybody's seeing, and I'm sure the sheriff can agree, they don't want to get off the street. They're very comfortable being there, they have a lot of resources. Our Swag team does such an outstanding job. When I was with the team that I walked with, I, their hearts are so huge to get these men and women off the streets because a lot of them were in the exact same position that they were. So they know how to work with them, they know how to ask the questions and trying to get the resources. But right now, also, if I can share this too, this was an interesting fact that I found out. Now, because of the fentanyl crisis and situation that we have going right now as well, they're finding that there is a very small window for people who are on fentanyl to actually have them be able to critically even try to think. So if they get them to the point to where they are, uh, you know, high, uh, you're not going to be able to, they're not going to be able to think critically. And if you get them when they're on a real low, they can't think very well either. So there's this very small window. So this fentanyl crisis is not helping either, and so I just want to just applaud everybody who's really doing their due diligence to try to work and to help these people. But again, uh, like, um, Commissioner was saying, you know, we do need more people out there. So I just want to just thank the city for doing this. There's some ideas that I had that I already spoke to the city manager about that we'll be bringing up, so maybe we can get even better census and intervention and help in these areas, but we will continue to do our due diligence. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. Number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Number three, approve listed demands. Number four, approve annual legislative legislative platform for calendar year twenty twenty-five with addition of insurance provision at the request of Councilmember Schwenk. Number five, approve U.S. House of Representatives District Office lease amendment at the Temecula Civic Center. Number six, approve purchase and installation agreement with Helix Storm, Inc. for replacement of technology infrastructure at Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library. Number seven, approve general plan update managing consultant agreement with Sage Crest Planning and Environmental, long-range project number L R two four zero four six two. Number eight, approve maintenance services agreement with Tony Painting for annual painting maintenance services. Number nine, establish always stop control at the intersection of La Serena and Cali Medusa. When any of my colleagues like to pull an item.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item four again for, um, potential action, but I would move the balance of the consent.
Second. All right. So it's been motion in the second to move forward the balance with excluding number four. That passes five to zero. Can we have a staff report on number four, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and number, item number four, uh, the City Council went ahead and approved the legislative platform and, uh, with the addition of the e-bike provision, um, at the last City Council meeting. The City Council also directed staff to go ahead and work with Councilmember Schwenk on the addition of an insurance provision. So, um, what you will see in front of you, actually, is that particular insurance provision. Um, and you can see that it it states that the city supports legislation, funding, and related policies that maintain and expand homeowner and commercial insurance coverage choices for all consumers, including in the event of natural disasters. Ensure rare access for those located in designated high-risk areas for all natural disasters. I know that was important for Councilmember Ron. Promote a competitive insurance marketplace and maintain solvency of the fare plan in the absence of other insurance, and overall strengthens California marketplace for homeowners and commercial property insurance. Because this is a city-specific insurance, um, city-specific statement that will be going into our legislative platform in regards to, um, insurance, commercial, and residential, um, this is kind of our proactive stance on the topic as opposed to a general policy statement. And then in addition to that one, um, Councilmember Schwenk actually, um, wanted the council to also consider an additional statement. Currently, in our legislative platform, we do not have a city-specific statement in regards to housing. We do have a general statement, general policy statement. In front of you, you see what that general policy statement is, and it says just more broadly that we support legislation and funding programs that promote development enhancement of safe, affordable, and accessible housing within the city for all segments of the population. The following proposed statement actually, again, gives us a city-specific statement with more targeted advocacy opportunity. It states that we support initiatives that promote homeownership through education, resources, and partnership with public, private, and nonprofit organizations, strengthen housing resiliency in response to natural disasters, preserve aging housing stock through maintenance and revitalization programs, and provide related state and federal resources and funding. This proposed city-specific statement is also something that was one of the recommendations that came out of the Council Ready Commission Youth Housing Conversation that happened last year as well. So with that, that is staff's report, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Schwenk for anything that we missed.
Thank you very much, Director Joel. Yeah, I, so, um, I really wanted to really dive into something that was more specific. And the statements that we have are sufficiently vague enough that we could sort of put any, anything into one of those buckets. But given sort of those conversations that we've had at our joint workshops, that we hear from the community, and just things that we know, um, you know, most of the majority of the funding is for rental stock, and we know we need to bolster homeownership, we're like, that's just a fact, like, we want to provide that. So I hope my colleagues will join me in supporting this, um, this more city-specific statement that we can use to leverage in Sacramento for legislation and and really just, um, sort of making a stand and saying, hey, this is, this is who we are, this is what we value, rather than the sort of the general statements, which again are sufficiently vague to sort of accomplish that, but I think a more specific statement is needed.
Absolutely. If all of our colleagues agree, I'll entertain a motion to move that item forward.
I'll move it.
Second. It's been moved in second. It's been moved and seconded. And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
With that, I will recess the city council meeting and hand it over to President Schwenk of the TCSD meeting.
Thank you very much, Mayor Koffis. I will now call the Temecula Community Services District Meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments for non-agenda items?
We do not.
Okay, we'll dispense with the reading of those rules, and we'll move to our consent calendar. We have one item, item 10, approve action minutes of January 14th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Move approval, second.
Okay, let us vote. Okay, and that looks like it passes five to zero. Thank you. Director of Community Services, report anything this evening.
Yes, we'd just like to do a quick overview of events that we have coming up for Black History Month. We are hosting Chloe Arnold Syncopated Ladies on Saturday, February 8th, at the Temecula Theater, which is right here in Old Town. If you haven't been to the theater, you're missing a hidden gem. It's absolutely fantastic. The acoustics are exceptional. And the Syncopated Ladies were extremely excited to be bringing in. They're a really high-energy tap performance group. So, these performances always sell out, and if you have a chance, you don't want to miss this one. And then, over at the Temecula Valley Museum, which is also here in Old Town, right by Sam Hicks Park, we're going to be installing a new exhibit called "I Am a Man." It's photographs of the civil rights movement from 1960 to 1970. Really, really moving photojournalism, and that will be available to view for free. Our admission is just donation-based, from February 4th through March 16th. And then, during that exhibit, we will be having a gallery talk with Joy Miller, who will be providing a lecture on the civil rights movement on February 15th at noon at the museum. All of this is available, more information on our website. You can also call here at City Hall. We're happy to answer any questions. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Russo. General Manager, anything tonight?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Board of Directors, anything? All right, where you are adjourned, back to city council.
I will call to order the successor agency, the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Moving on to the consent calendar, number 11, we will approve action minutes of January 14th, 2025. I will entertain a motion.
Move second.
It's been first and second. Please vote. That motion passes unanimously. Do we have an executive director report?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Board of Directors? Seeing none, I will adjourn the SADA meeting. We have no Temecula Housing Authority meeting and no Temecula Public Financing Authority meeting. I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting to a public hearing. We have one public hearing item tonight, number 12, adopt public nuisance abatement special assessment resolution for certain parcels located west of Mercedes Street and south of Third Street for the period of June 16th, 2024, to December 13th, 2024. And can I get a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're discussing a property in Old Town. The property owner actually notified us that they would no longer be able to maintain a protective fence on June 5th, 2024. And around that, or inside of that protective fence, there are drop-offs, steel, other things that would be dangerous to the community with, especially with all the Fourth of July events and holiday events that we have in Old Town. As a result, we declared emergency public nuisance in accordance with the municipal code. The parcels under discussion are just west of the parking garage, south of Third Street, and west of Mercedes. And the property owner did actually sign a voluntary right-of-entry agreement to allow the city to have quick access to the site. And the city has the ability, under the right-of-entry agreement, as well as the municipal code, to recoup all costs associated with this emergency abatement. As part of that cost recovery, we notified the property owner through multiple methods, listed in front of you, but five different methods at minimum. So, they're well aware of the cost recovery. The cost recovery does require a resolution for the city council, so we could place a special assessment on the property owner that they would pay during their property taxes, and we will have to do future resolutions if the nuisance continues to, to be in place. Staff is recommending that we adopt, the city council adopt a resolution confirming the special assessments, and staff's available for any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments? No public comments, I will now close the public hearing. And unless there's further discussion, I will take a motion to approve the item.
Second.
It's been first and second, please vote. And that item passes five to zero. We'll move on to our business items. We have three business items tonight. We will start off at number 13, receive report regarding annual board committee and commission recruitment and selection process, and provide general direction regarding the same. Can I get a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, tonight, we are here to discuss and receive direction on the annual boards, committees, and commissions appointment process. I want to start with a little bit of history. Before October 2019, we used to have terms that expired twice a year, in the spring and fall, and recruitments occurred twice a year in response to those term expirations. And appointments were made based on subcommittee recommendations. So, as you can see, it's been about six years since we looked at this process. Our community has changed and evolved, and we just want to get a quick touch base. After October 2019, our current process, the terms expire once annually based on a calendar year, and the recruitment happens once annually in response to those expirations. Appointments are made based on a public appointment process without subcommittees. Next slide, please. So, currently, we notify all applicants that the appointment process is a public process. That is also noted on the electronic applications. Electronic applications are specifically received during the advertised period. At the close of the advertised period, all qualified applications, and by qualified, we mean that those that are living within the city's jurisdiction. Every once in a while, someone will apply, and they live outside of the city boundaries. We provide those applications to each council member for review in anticipation of meeting, of the meeting upcoming for appointments. The appointments are scheduled at a regularly scheduled meeting under the business portion of the agenda. Each candidate has five minutes to provide an optional presentation. This is not mandatory. They may let all of their qualifications and their application stand on their own. However, if they would like to come and provide an additional presentation, verbal presentation only, they're welcome to do so. After questions and discussion, council members indicate their preference for an appointment through a majority vote of the city council. Currently, we advertise our appointments through the newspaper of general circulation. This is required. Many years ago, this is what we did only because that was what was required. Temecula, though, does go above and beyond in the sense that we do issue a press release for community stakeholders. That one's really important because that press release goes to members of the chamber, Pachanga, the school district, other community leaders. We also advertise on our city website. We also advertise on our Channel 3 peg station. We also do social media, Facebook and Instagram. We also include a report on the council's agenda to receive a presentation, letting the public know that we're going out for recruitment. So, we try to do everything that we can to really put that, those vacancies out there for awareness purposes. Next slide. Now, the current process, there are some opportunities and challenges with it. So, over the last several years, we have seen a decline in applicant pool. That could be for a variety of reasons. So, the main thing we see right now with council considering this particular item is there are some opportunities to grow our candidate pool with qualified applicants, and there is definitely an opportunity to engage our new residents. Obviously, some of the challenges that exist is lack of applicant interest, experience, and overall time availability. Next slide, please. Now, this decline could be for a variety of reasons, but it's always important to have a quick snapshot of our demographics. Our median age in our community is 38 years of age. So, 25% of our residents are less than 18 years of age. 25% of our residents are over 55 years of age. So, it kind of gives you this picture. In addition, about 50% or so of our families have children. So, it gives you this picture and a 38-minute commute. So, it gives you this picture of where that median age might be focused right now. 50% of our community might be focused on simply just commute, you know, after-school programs, you know, all that kind of good stuff. And then, we know that there's just an overall decline in interest in participation with government at all levels. Next slide, please. Now, with respect to the appointment process in other jurisdictions, there are four main processes for best practices. This is pretty much what everyone does if they have boards and commissions, because it does need to involve some sort of a public process. So, some do what we do now. There's a public process, similar to ours, and there's a, candidates come before the council or submit resumes, and council publicly appoints. Some do what we did before, subcommittee recommendations. There's a council subcommittee, those recommendations are made, the whole council goes ahead and approves those recommendations. When the council here did that previously, very rarely was there any changes to subcommittee recommendations. In some cities, this typically happens with strong cities and cities that have directly-elected mayors. The mayor will make a recommendation, and then the council will go ahead and approve. And then, lastly, in some cities, there are direct council member appointments. Those direct council member appointments may be made at large or by district, but each council member on a five-member board or on a seven-member board would get one appointment to a respective commissioner's seat. Next slide, please. So, with all of that in mind, we would love, Mr. Mayor, for you to go ahead and facilitate a discussion and provide some general direction to staff regarding the annual board committee and commission recruitment and selection process. It might be that the council wishes to stay the course and make no changes. It might be that the council would like to make some changes. Tonight, we are here just to receive general direction and comments, and we'll see where that goes.
Thank you for that report, Madam City Clerk. And I think it's important to note what you said with the community changes involved and evolves that we have to change and evolve with it. So, I'm intrigued to hear what my colleagues have to say. And does anyone want to start it off and get the conversation going? I can start it off here. I like how we've done with the processes and how they've continuously evolved and changed. I would like to look into, you know, the direct council member appointment. I think that would be an interesting, at least to research it, see what that entails, see if that's done in other cities, in other regions around here, see how that plays out, and go from there. And also, look into some of the roles and responsibilities of our current committees and our current commission members, and to really just go around and see what the region around us is doing, what the cities around us are doing, how many commissions other cities and regions have, based on population size, and make sure that we're not doing a duplication of effort. I know we have a lot of collaboration between our commissions, between us and our commissions, but just to make sure that our, that our local municipality here is working as efficient as we can. So, the main things for me, if my colleagues would agree, is to look in, look through the processes, including the direct council member appointments, the roles and responsibilities of our current committee and commission members, and have staff look into, again, the best practices across our region, across our state, based on Temecula's population size, based on our demographics, and ensuring that we are doing everything as efficient as possible as our local government here. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was thinking the same thing as far as direct appointments. I, I think it's a, it's a much more efficient way, too, to communicate with those particular commissions, because if each of us have somebody that we know on a, on a more free basis, it would allow us to have an insight or a touch into each of these commissions that doesn't exist today. And so, I, I too would be more in favor of having a, a direct appointment by a city council person. And, I mean, even as far as, you know, we, we were all on term limits now. I think that's something we need to discuss also, if, because, you know, we have a history of very, very long-serving commissioners, and especially some departments. And I, I think for the very reason that we now have term limits, we need that turnover also in our commissions to, to have that same experience or same input of new information and new thought. And so, that's kind of where I sit, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Schwenk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's an interesting conversation, I think, for sure. I have an equally interesting perspective, I think, as the only one that's been on both sides of this, right? Like, I was, I was out there as an appointed commissioner and then sitting here, trying to decide who to appoint to our commissions. And I can say, so, the, the subcommittee process that we typically did, bless you. I don't know that that was the best way to do it, right? But it was just the way we did it. And then, the process that we're doing now, you know, I, I think initially, I thought, oh, that would be like a healthy way to do it, right? To do it out sort of in this open, public space. But I don't see that it is also the best way to do it. I, I really do like the idea of, of each council member gets an appointment on each of the commissions. And, and really, the term limits kind of takes care of itself if we choose that, because then, you know, if you go and you're appointed for a commissioner, would essentially span your term, so you would get a four-year term as a commissioner. And then, it would do a couple of things. So, it would, it would make things a little more efficient. We would recruit less. We would recruit essentially every two years along those, that election cycle, you would do a recruitment. But I think more importantly, it puts the onus on the individual council member to find somebody, right? Like, there's going to be an applicant pool, but sometimes the way we do it here, you know, that we all don't ask questions, and, you know, I typically don't ask questions because then I feel like if I don't ask the same question for the, to the other 25 applicants, it's not really like equitable. So, like, it's, it's just kind of like an odd way we're doing it, although it is highly transparent in that respect, so that's good. So, I think there, that there's opportunities for us to, to, to really be bold, and, and much like what we did with Old Town Local Review Board, which is now the Old Town Local Advisory Committee, OTLAC, and giving commissioners like specific tasks to do. I would sort of go one step further and really just throw out this bold statement that I, I do think that we are commission-heavy. We can certainly study it and sort of look at what other cities do, but I'm more concerned about what we're doing. And I can see some, I can see an opportunity where community services and ready sort of merges. I can see an opportunity where planning and traffic safety merge, right? And then, you have, you know, these commissions with five people, I think Ready has seven, although there, there's six right now. I mean, you would have these commissions where there's five commissioners, but the efficiencies you build into that with having a directly-appointed person on these commissions sort of takes away the, and we just went through it, you know, last meeting where we, you know, who's going to be the liaison to X commission, right? Well, you're now a liaison to every commission via your appointment, right? And, and then, that appointment, again, lives with your term. And so, then, the next council member gets an opportunity, and, and so on, so on. So, I think there's, I think there's an opportunity for us to do some really bold stuff and, and do specific things. And those aren't things that I'm just thinking about. You're hearing that from commissioners. They're wanting like a specific task, if you will. And I think what we did last year with planning with Ready respectively, that was like a specific goal out of that. And it's so much more meaningful than just having a meeting every month to have a meeting, right? To approve the minutes and kind of hear, you know, reports from staff. I think, like, if we're going to do it, kind of condense commissions, and then just, these are the specific areas. And I know that might sound, you know, harsh in some respects, that you're sort of cutting people out, but we have so many opportunities for involvement in the city that I think everyone that's on the commissions now, the opportunities will still exist in sort of more organic ways. And, and just, I won't belabor it too much longer, but the, just the idea, we're having issues with our sister city having issues with our sister-city organization right now. We could potentially help stand up just a sister-city-specific commission to deal with outreach and fundraising and to help that program succeed. They would have a specific task, maybe they only meet a couple of times a year, but it's specific, it's task-driven. And I think you would find the folks that would sort of, sort of like, gather towards that would find value in that. And you would get much more efficient commissions doing those things. So that's, I would be in favor of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwank. Mayor Protem?
Well, I guess, let me, I hate to be the one to be like, oh, so back in my day. But, you know, early on, you know, I was the one that brought forward the idea that subcommittee appointments for board and commission members wasn't the best way forward, right? And there were a couple of reasons why. One was because we only had, you know, two council members, really, that were making a decision for the entire city and city council. And it, for me, as the new council member at that time, years ago, was sort of like, well, I didn't feel like I really participated in the process if I wasn't on the subcommittee. And you weren't really going to argue with the subcommittee, because, you know, you didn't really have the deep dive into those interviews or, you know, packet of information as the subcommittee had, and, you know, staff facilitating meetings and so forth in that conversation. And so, you know, issue number one for me was to have all five council members represented in the conversation to make that selection, right? And I think that was a big breakthrough. The other thing that I was concerned about and still am is the sort of open and transparent government, right? If we do a lot of this conversation in a subcommittee, or, and I'm not disagreeing with the idea of a council member appointee, right? But if we do that without an open and transparent public process, and we just come to the dais one day and say, well, I like Bob, and Bob's going to be my new planning commissioner, you know, you lose out on that connection to, you know, a, really, a remarkable pool of candidates that are out there, right? And over the years, yeah, it's waxed and waned as far as, you know, the number of applicants we have had, but I specifically remember one year where I think we had, like, seventy-eight applicants for various board and commission seats, right? And it was a little overwhelming to do all of that publicly, but, you know, we found some remarkable folks in the community and, at the same time, saw a lot of folks that we had no idea were interested in participating. And some of those folks today are still serving on our boards and commissions. And so it was this great opportunity to really engage folks, right? So I wouldn't want to lose the open and transparent side of government, because to me, that's, you know, that's critical. And any decisions that we make, you know, obviously, we all have our own ideas and motivations for, you know, who we think best represents a planning commissioner or traffic safety or whatever. But taking that out of the public's view, I think, would be a big mistake. And so I'd, like, see, the other thing, I think, that concerns me a little bit about this is influence over commissioners. Now, you'll see that in other cities that have a directly-appointed, say, planning commissioner. And you'll see planning commissioners often, not always, and I'm not pointing any fingers at any, you know, municipality in particular, but you'll see planning commissioners often aligning themselves with the vote or the perspective of the council member or, you know, board member, whoever that appoints them, right? And I think you lose the whole point in some respects, because you really want an independent party, not, you know, yeah, you could talk to folks and, yeah, you know, you can share your perspective about things, but you lose that independence if all you're doing is just making sure that your perspective as a council member makes its way to that commissioner that's representing you, right? Because then you're no longer, the community is no longer representing. You're just pointing fingers at, you know, five different commissions and telling them what to do or how you want them to vote. So I don't want to see this devolve, and I don't think it would, because I think we are all sort of on the same track with this. But, you know, it's just one of those things I've seen in other jurisdictions that just kind of, you know, it feels wrong to me. The other thing I do like, though, about the individual appointments, if council members are going to individually appoint folks, again, if it were this open and transparent process, there's accountability back to that council member, though, right? So it's not just, because we can kind of shield ourselves, you know, as a five-to-zero or a three-to-two vote up here, and say, well, I didn't vote for that person, you know, if something goes sideways. Or, you know what I mean? Like, you've got that level of protection, and you can remove yourself one layer from that saying, well, we all agreed, right? You know, so I'd want to make sure, you know, again, in this process, it just provides that direct accountability and says, yeah, hey, that was your person. And, you know, and, you know, we need to be able to have that conversation. And so it increases the accountability on the council side, which I kind of like. The community engagement piece, I mean, we'll have to sort of navigate this carefully, because, you know, I myself, so when I had brought up, believe it or not, when we brought this whole thing up originally, I had said, not only do I want an open, transparent process, and we all interview and do this in public, but I also pushed the idea that maybe, you know, council members do have their own appointee or whatever. And pretty much universally, everybody on the council at that time said no. And so I knew that was, you know, that was no hill I was going to charge up, because it was a four-to-one, and there was no doubt, I, you know, not going to happen. I am pleasantly surprised that, you know, and I haven't heard what you have to say yet, but fingers crossed. But, you know, I'm pleasantly surprised to see the change, because I really do think it really helps, you know, in representation of the council and these board and commission members. But again, it's just how do we navigate that to make sure that, you know, you know, hey, Bob's my neighbor, and actually, I don't have a neighbor named Bob, just, you know, but Bob's my neighbor, and, you know, and that's my pick for this, and that's who I really want to see on this, you know, board or commission, and exclude the public from that conversation, right? So I want to figure out how we do that. And I think I know, you know, what we're all, what we're saying here. The last piece was, you know, on term limits. Yeah, just implement the term limits, tie it to the members', you know, cycle of election and all that. I like that. It cuts down on, you know, staff time and having to recruit every, you know, like you said, we used to do it twice a year. Now we're down to once a year. If we can do it once every two years, I think that helps streamline things. And then last, to your point on consolidating boards and commissions, I don't know what that looks like. And I'll say, I'll use the Traffic Safety Commission as an example. I know our planning commission spends a lot of time on a lot of issues directly relating to, and it's a unique commission compared to all the others, because they actually have authority on decision-making, right? All the other boards and commissions don't. They're not kind of filling that same capacity. So if we take traffic safety and plow it into planning, it adds a lot of additional responsibility, but it also, like, right now, when you look at the Traffic Safety Commission, it's made up of folks who have backgrounds in traffic and public safety, you know, which is lending, you know, incredible expertise to the city and people who are volunteering their time to give that expertise. If we have planning commissioners, you know, several of whom, and, you know, we have folks who joined the planning commission, who had no experience in planning, but grew into that position and really took on that responsibility, learned what that meant, right? And they're very good at what they do today, except the new guy. I don't know, we haven't seen him yet, so we'll find out. But, you know, but if you go through that whole process and you say, okay, we're going to combine these two things, I think we're diluting it a little bit, because, you know, traffic and safety is a bit of a different animal and a different expertise that we'd be looking for. So I wouldn't necessarily want somebody with a law enforcement background, you know, to be on the planning commission, because I want them to be on Traffic Safety Commission, you know? And I think that that representation and their perspective, and the folks who have come forward over the years to lend their expertise, have just been remarkable. I mean, the folks we have seen coming out, it's just like, man, Temecula's got a deep pool of a lot of folks with incredible talent. And so we're going to lose that additional talent by, you know, sort of combining. Same token, I understand the whole point of streamlining, you know, some of this process and trying to figure out, you know, a more efficient way forward. So I'm still open to that conversation. But again, it's one of those that's kind of a tricky one to navigate. And in, like, the Old Town Committee, you know, you can't really plow that into anything, because it's just such a unique, you know, subset. So, you know, my only concern is we'd go from right now, what, twenty, twenty-six members of the community representing different perspectives, and, you know, take, you know, ten of those members out of the mix. And every one of them has, I think, a valuable perspective. So that would be my only hesitation there, but I'd still like to have that conversation and see where that moves us. So those are all my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ron. Mayor Protem?
Okay, I'm up. So that was really good, actually, listening to kind of all of that and being able to consolidate it. So I hope I can read my notes now after just writing in the little areas here and crevices. So number one, I definitely do like the idea of the district, I guess, direct council member appointments, that's what we're calling it, right? So I do like that opportunity. One, a couple of things, just as I go down. Ron, I do absolutely like exactly what you're saying. I think you have some great points. Again, also for Schwank, same thing. I do love the term limits for the four years. The one question I do want to think about is for that, let's say we do hire somebody who just becomes somebody who we really didn't think or expect to do certain things or, whatever. Something can happen. Is it something that we can say, okay, we want to be able to remove that person after a certain amount of time? You know, maybe we can relook at that after a year or two years, or, I don't know. That's something to look at, though, you know, because we know people are people and things happen. So that would be one. Let me see, recruitment. Another thing I think also, Ron, that you had stated I liked as well, is I do like the fact of having people come to the podium and at least talk, because maybe I don't know somebody who is going to be really good for the planning commission, you know? I looked at, I look at Lanay, she had no experience before and doing a rocking job right now and has really learned over the years. So we see people coming into these positions who might not have the experience but can quickly learn. But at the same time, maybe I don't know somebody who has that experience. So whether or not we have even just applicants coming up, either to the podium or applications like we have with the book, I would love to continue to have that, because there are a lot more people out there in the city that I don't know yet. So that would at least still open up the opportunity for people to be a part of the pool of people onto the city council. Let me see, the other area, same thing. Another concern of mine is against, again, the education and knowledge from the planning commission. They bring a lot. They have a lot to learn. And I don't know if, maybe I can even ask staff, how long typically until we see somebody who's pretty solidified in those areas to say, hey, they're pretty knowledgeable in planning or public, like, the safety commission?
Well, it varies. It depends on if you have any experience coming in. So, but if you don't have any experience coming in, it could take you a considerable amount of time. And there's a lot to it. I mean, you've got CEQA, you've got land use law, there's a lot going on with the planning commission. So it could take a while.
And how would that affect you guys as staff, bringing people in every four years? Is that, would you feel that that is a good amount of time, or what does that look like?
Four years is a good amount of time.
Okay.
That's a good amount of time.
All right, all right, wonderful. That helps me. Thank you. Sorry, I've got a lot, little just things here. Another thing, and just an idea, so we can kind of broaden and open up the perspective of different ideas, is it a possibility that we can have, appoint two commissioners per commission? So instead of having just one, we each have an opportunity to have, like, two on the community, I don't know, community-safety-ready combination to have just more perspective on something like that. So possibility, I don't know, just something to put out there. We're bringing more talent in, more perspective. I'll give you an example. Just recently, I know I've been working with staff for the last few months. I've had, and I've met an incredible man that I didn't even know was here in our community. His name is Yun. He actually, he's disabled, he's in a wheelchair, and he's actually, he's deaf. Amazing man, brings really, really good perspective to things. And I even had thought over the last couple of months, why do we not have somebody like that on some of our commissions, to be able to give a perspective of the deaf community? And I'm learning how much that's being missed in our city. So something just, again, to think about as we bring people in. And, you know, as we look at this, too, if we consolidate the boards, I know there's, I'm kind of all over, but just putting notes out here, consolidating the boards as well is also going to save on money for our taxpayers, and at the same time, it's going to save time and effort for our staff as well. So I think it's, again, something to look at. The question is, it seems like a lot of us are on the same page. Is this something we want to put to a subcommittee at this point in time, too, or like an ad hoc committee, to kind of hash out the little things and go from there? So that's what I've got.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Stewart, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, and as far as the council appointments, I think we all know a lot of people in our community who are willing to serve, but for whatever reason, they see these commission appointments as, you know, if we have commissioners, we're not going to upset the apple cart, and we're going to reappoint, reappoint, reappoint. And we've lost a lot of good people who just don't even pay attention to the recruitment anymore, because they just don't feel like there's an opportunity to serve. So that's why I really like the council appointment. And I think it's incumbent upon the council member to basically make a pitch for their council appointment. So it's not Bob, my next-door neighbor, it's Jim, the engineer that I want to see on the planning commission, because of his skills and years as an engineer, you know? So I think, I think we would all come in with probably very high-quality talent and be able to sell each other on our appointment. And I think we should still vote on it. I think we should still have a vote on each of our appointment, just for your transparency idea, because I think that's important. And so, but I think all of us have connections out into the community, like Rotary, you know, I'm involved in Rotary. There's a lot of high-quality people in Rotary who would love to be able to give back to our community, and they do all the time through Rotary. So, but I've had people say, you know, you know, is there anything, you know? And it's like, so if there was that opportunity for us to actually have that influence or appointment into, you know, using our connections with our own community, because we have insights into people that, you know, everybody does. Everybody knows everybody. So, but I just feel it would be a great opportunity for us to have that connection within each of these commissions. And the consolidation idea, I like it. I don't know any details yet, but I think that would be something that we should look into and maybe hash it out, and subcommittee or ad hoc, just to kind of go through all those details and see what is redundant, what doesn't need to be. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, just a couple other additional thoughts here in the conversation. As, you know, one of the hurdles, I think, when I brought this up the first time, was, you know, one of the members, I remember, saying, well, what if I can't find somebody, you know, kind of thing? And it's like, well, we're all here to help, right? So I think that, you know, that needs to be clear. The other is, you know, is it by district or at-large? And I think that's something worth talking about, because, you know, I think there's, again, very interesting talent pool. Does it help in the traffic or planning, you know, traffic safety or planning commission, to have a representative from your own district? Yeah, uniquely, it does, right? Because your folks that are driving or around in your own district are going to have a different perspective on traffic than somebody who's predominantly in, you know, a district completely different, right? So there's some value in that. But I'd hesitate to make that a requirement necessarily, because, you know, there could be somebody that lives just across the border or something, or, you know, there's just an incredible candidate that we're, you know, all enamored with, but, you know, I've already got my pick for District One, and maybe Zach, you think that's a great choice for your district, you know what I mean? So I'd want to give us that kind of flexibility, and then each member can kind of decide from their own perspective, you know, what, you know, what best represents, you know, their perspective as well. The removal process, that's an interesting one that you brought up, Mayor Protem, because, you know, if we're going to vote on this as a council, which ultimately we do for the appointment process, is the removal process by individual member or by all five members, right? So that's something I think we should kind of talk about as well. And I would assume, I don't know, legally may not be the right word, but procedurally, if it's appointed by all five members, then it should likely be removed by all five members, right? So, you know, that's kind of an interesting discussion. And in the term limits discussion, too, I wanted to mention, I, you know, four years seems, in some respects, like a short amount of time. So I wouldn't want to preclude, you know, a discussion of term limits that's either eight or twelve years long, right? Maybe the maximum of what a council member could do. And again, you have full, you know, authority to make your recommendations and say, I've had this person for four years, they've done a great job, but I think, you know, this other person, you know, would, you know, fair a good chance in representation... you know, fair a good chance in, in representation. So I'd want to make sure that we have that conversation. And again, you know, if we set a, a maximum, you know, of 12 years, I think that's representative, because, you know, of our, our own term limits. But, you know, shorter than that, I think, again, it, it could be up to each individual council member to see how they want to implement, you know, the term limit concept within that boundary. So those, just some additional thoughts.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one thought on the, I'm thinking less of a subcommittee, ad hoc committee, and more of a, a staff presentation, again, at a future city council meeting. That way, it's a very open and transparent process on all the things we discussed. So just personally, I, I don't feel that this needs a subcommittee or ad hoc committee. But I think everything, we, we had a lot of good direction to staff. Councilmembers Schwank?
Yeah, I, I just want to add a little bit more, because like, this conversation is nice, we can kind of bounce stuff off each other. I think we could even make a motion tonight to do some of this stuff. But I did want to, I wanted to sit on the term limits for a second, because, because initially, I, I was just sort of, you know, talking, and, and they would just sort of naturally happen, right? Because as council members, we're, we're termed out at three terms, right? So you, you wouldn't necessarily need to have term limits, but then thinking about it, as say, I appointed someone, and then I termed out, and then a new council member was like, oh, we like that person, we're going to appoint them. That potentially, you could, you could have a commission that could serve, you know, 30 years or whatever. And we want to have Peter to have the only 35 pins, so we want to stop that from happening.
Gee, thanks.
But I, but I think maybe if we're going to talk term limits, it should just match council term limits, like, that seems like the most reasonable thing to do. I, I like the, the idea, and Mayor Protem, you mentioned perspective, because, you know, there are times when we have applicants come up, and, and, you know, I'll pick someone, because I think that they would offer a unique perspective, right? And the, the rest of the councils, like, no. And, and we've all done that, right? We've all picked an individual person that we think individually would have a really good perspective on X commission. And I think that, 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 the process, if we change it to this, offers that. So like, the story that you mentioned, the person you mentioned, you have an opportunity to appoint that person. I don't agree with the, the all five people voting on it, because of the reasons that Councilmember Ron brought up. Because you get into a space where, if we all are all five voting on something, and, and then you, it was, well, that person's doing really good, and, and maybe the individual council member has a different perspective, or, you know, they just want to do something different, but the council's like, you know, no, we like this person, we're going to keep him. It takes away that, that autonomy from the individual council member. So I would like to just, we should still do it publicly. I think that that process is fine. But much like Councilmember Stewart mentioned, like, we, we have access to a lot of highly qualified people, right? But it isn't always the highly qualified people that we appoint. We often appoint people that just care about our city. And they don't come with, you know, this pedigree in planning, or this, that, the other thing, but they have a heart. And I'm looking at you, Lanay, they have a heart for the city, right? And so we shouldn't feel like, oh, I have to say, well, this person has X background, and I need to defend it to you all. I should say, this is a person I believe is going to offer a great perspective. And, and I would do the same for you. If you came and said, hey, hey, here's my applicant, I'd be like, awesome, you know, like, that's great. I wouldn't want input on that, because I think we're kind of stepping over, over that. So those are kind of the things where I stand. And then, you know, like, with the specific sort of commissions, like OTLAC, we held off on appointing, we changed, like, we gave a direction. And I really think, and, and at the end of the meeting tonight, I'll bring an item where we can have a broader discussion about consolidation, or about, you know, re, listen, I don't even call it consolidation, let's call it like re-envisioning commissions and temecula, or something really fun and like, snappy like that. But like, there's going to be a ton of value in like, re-envisioning this and having this conversation. Now, I, like, you were part of it before, where you were like, oh, this isn't going to happen. This is like, this is really exciting, to sort of like, we can say, well, this is what we think is best for the city now. We don't have to, we don't have to do things like we've always done them for the last 30 some odd years, right? So there's a ton of value in this. But I would say, five-member commissions, we each get a, with an appointment. It's, you know, not all five vote on it, you do a 12-year term limit, four-year terms for commissioners that run concurrent with council, with the council term, we're doing recruitment every couple of years. This is like, pretty exciting. That's all I got.
I think we all completely agree on the list that you just provided. Madam City Clerk, there's been a lot of good direction thrown out there tonight. Do you need more specific from us on bringing this to a future city council meeting?
So I just want to make sure I have a good understanding on the record of what your general direction was. So what I'm hearing is that the city council, from, from an overwhelming interest, is interested in direct council member appointments. So we've tried subcommittees, we've tried at-large, so you guys are looking at that fourth option I showed on the slide that other cities have in regards to direct council member appointments. You're also interested in, in some sort of term limits that match council term limits. You are also interested in making sure there is a component, which some of this is going to happen organically, because the, the board committee commission appointment process has to be a public process by law. So for example, and we'll have to research this and get some ideas when we come back to you all. For example, you know, we can include resumes in the agenda packet, right? We can include, you know, maybe a information sheet that the one, your recommendation, your recommended candidate puts out there for the public, right? Like, we can think through what that open, transparent government piece is, so that the public has a, has a general awareness like they do right now about who, the qualifications of the applicants and the candidates. In addition to that, we can certainly make sure that the appointment and removal process is flexible, but at the same time is definitive. Because the appointment process currently happens by a majority vote. A board committee or commission member is, is legally appointed by the city council. So we would need to, I would need to work with our illustrious city attorney of 35 years in figuring out proper language that would retain flexibility and authority of each council member to appoint, but still make sure that the majority vote is reflective of an actual appointment, or an actual removal, or what, whatever the, the final action is in regards to that individual. And then I heard the piece about making sure that we are, our boards, committees, and commissions are operating at maximum effectiveness and efficiency. We know in, in boards, committees, and commissions throughout our region, not including even the state of California, there are many cities that have no commissions, other than planning commission, and then there are many cities that have like, 10 commissions. So we're going to need to do some research and understand, based on our population, based on our departments, based on our current services, which some of them are contract services, others are not. So we're going to look at all of that. And then I definitely heard the piece about making sure that we are not diluting and/or losing talent at the cost of efficiency and effectiveness as well. So I think that was everything that we heard. Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Quick question, I'm just going to throw this out to the council, something I had thought about, and I think we spoke about, I spoke with you, Randy, and possibly some other staff. You know, one of the things that I think we all have run into as well is during the interviews, I mean, one of my biggest things is, I like seeing people up there, you know, I like to hear people, like, you know, I just, I read people. But at the same time, I know there are individuals who might not be able to make that. I mean, we've had people who are sick, we've had people who, I mean, they work shift, just like, just like the mayor, you know, so they can't always make that. Is there a possibility that we can even put out there, that a five-minute video can be done? So that way, we can kind of get an understanding of who they are, if they cannot make it? Because maybe they're an incredible candidate, but now we're like, oh, you didn't show, okay, I want to see you. So I know I make phone calls, I talk to people, but there's something about seeing somebody, at least in some type of perspective. So I don't know what the council thinks about maybe adding that kind of to the end of it. So.
Yep, so noted. I, I know part of this effective and efficient engagement, especially of new residents, has that component to it as well. So, so noted. So that is the general direction that we have now for, based on all of that. We're going to need some time to do all this research, and then we will bring it back to the full city council for consideration. I do want to ask Mr. City Attorney, are you comfortable with this general direction that we've consolidated on the record, or should we go ahead and get a motion on this general direction?
No, I, I think you've summarized, I, I had exactly the same list. So as long as the council's comfortable with that, you can do all of your research and bring it back.
Wonderful.
I think we do have one more thing from Councilmember Ron.
Well, I, you know, I was just going to say, you know, we don't, it, this is the third evolution of, you know, our, our board and commission appointments, and, and how the council is, is doing things. And so, you know, clearly, nobody got it right the first time, or, or at least, you know, it's evolving over time as the city evolves. And, and so I, I think this, you know, the good news is, is that, you know, we still have the flexibility that after a certain period of time, and, and it doesn't have to be four years, it could be, you know, if we see something that's flawed in this process at the get-go, we can always, you know, pump the brakes and say, hey, hang on, that part of that policy just doesn't seem to be working, right? So I think, you know, inherent in this is, it's our direction, it's our opportunity to help, you know, guide this in the best way we think possible.
Perfect. No, I agree. I think my favorite part about council policies is their ability to be changed. And with that being said, we will move to item number 14, receive report regarding annual board committee and commission joint meetings and provide general direction regarding the same.
Okay. So, in light of the previous general direction, I'm going to go through this quickly, because it might indirectly be related to that as well. So, the history of our boards, committees, and commissions joint meetings, it was 2016 when council approved the amendments to the current role and authority of members. Those amendments were included in the handbook, which actually, on the previous item, whatever decisions are made, it will impact the handbook, and we will change the handbook as well. And as a part of those amendments, the council included a joint meeting between council members and boards, committees, and commission members. And the amendment was in this response to the then-council and boards, committees, and commissions member desire to engage in a more meaningful way and have an opportunity, a public opportunity to receive direction and, and from the city council. So currently, at these joint meetings, each board committee and commission provides an overview of the previous year highlights, the anticipated activities for the upcoming year, and takes further direction from council. Typically, in the last couple of years, when we've been doing this, we have not received specific direction from council, to the, to the commission members. We have, last year, we received specific direction from the council outside of those annual joint meetings. But that, that time, and part of it is, too, that the council is formulating its own council subcommittees and its own work plan for the upcoming year, too. Next slide. Now, again, in 2024, the council held two joint workshops, the Planning Commission for Alcohol Licensing and Live Entertainment, and then the Ready Commission for Youth Housing. After the workshops, both council members and commissioners individually indicated a preference for the workshop format of a joint meeting. Everybody agreed that it was more of a free-flowing dialogue, although it was a publicly noticed meeting, and although it was recorded, and all those things were the same, just being on kind of the same conversational setup seemed to be, around a particular topic seemed to be the preference. Next slide, please. So as we move forward, the things that council will need to consider, should they like, should they want to change the current joint meeting methodology, is frankly, the subject matter jurisdiction of each of our boards, committees, and commissions, and that's where I'm saying this might tie into the earlier conversation, the types of topics that you might want to refer to each board, committee, and commission, whether that needs to be a direct referral of assignments from the city council, like it was last year, or it should some, be something that is coming from the city manager. Also, the timing and depth of the council assignments. Councilmember Alexander's assignment last year to the Ready Commission, because they got so in-depth with it, took a good five months, six months to do. And it included a community youth survey, it included research, it included data. I mean, there was a lot, included presentations from stakeholders on that topic. So there was a lot of work that was put into it. Next slide, please. So our recommendation, Mr. Mayor, at this time, would be to discuss and provide general direction regarding annual board committee, commission joint meetings. Do you guys want to keep things the same in light of the previous direction? Do you want to hold off on this? We'll take whatever general direction you have at this time.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'll start this conversation off, just to lay it out, just as you did, Madam City Clerk. Prior to this, the annual joint meeting, right, the commissions would come up to the podium here, they would give a presentation on, on what went on annually, and the council would give feedback or questions. And it wasn't very interactive, as, as I like. And last year, we held those joint workshops over in the conference center, where we're all sitting, you know, at the same level, because at the end of the day, we're a team, right? Us and the commissions, even though the planning commission is the only one that's not really an advisory committee, we're a team, and the commissions are a part of the city council team. And those joint workshops were much longer than the annual review that we would have up here at the podium and at the dais. I thought they were great conversations, back and forth. The commission members, as well as the council members, had plenty of time to, to speak their mind and, and go dive deeper into, to certain subjects. So I would personally like to see the annual joint meetings be more of that workshop, more of that interactive approach to our council and our commissions. And that's, that's where I land right now. But I'm intrigued to hear all of your perspectives. Let's start with Councilmember Stewart, if you have anything.
I concur.
Councilmember Ron?
No, it's, it, it really, it makes a huge difference. Like you said, at the dais, it doesn't lend for conversation. It, it, it feels just like a one-way conversation, whereas when we had the workshops, like you said, we were all at one level. And it was very easy to engage in conversation with our planning commission or our ready commission. And so that, that's why I, I really felt that that's kind of the direction I think we should go. So.
Yeah. No, I agree. You know, I, I think the original intent, when I had put that request to the council again, you know, I mean, there was a point in time where none of you were sitting up here, you know? And so we, we made the space, and we knew we'd have to rotate, you know, those seats every other council meeting. But I was like, if, I'd like to know what's going on, you know? So I think that's an incredibly useful, and for the public, too, who watches the meetings, it's incredibly useful, I think, step forward. But, but, you know, the annual meeting together, you know, I saw that happen for the last few years, and it kind of evolved into this just report out. And it's like, yeah, well, we know what happened, we saw it, you know? Like, do we need to rehash that? No, that's not very helpful. What is helpful, I think, was the workshops. And, and, and I think, yeah, you know, it, it gives you that opportunity to provide more direction and come up with ideas, and really, you know, workshop thoughts with the board and commission members and say, hey, what's, you know, what's a good project for this year? What is, what is coming out of the community that, you know, we need to be aware of and be responsive to? So I, I love the concept. I'd much rather see us do, you know, sort of a workshop format than anything else, and just kind of get rid of that more formal process. Thank you. Councilmember Schwank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and again, like, I concur with both. And having presented as a commissioner multiple times, and I'm reading this off, and I'm like, y'all know this, like, we're living this, like, I'm going through this. And, and much respect to, you know, staff and everyone for putting those together for the commissioners, and they do a ton of good work. But again, we, we're at a, sort of a pivotal point where we can change, we can do better. The workshop format is fantastic. Everyone felt like it was beneficial, commissioners, council members, public, right? And that's what we're here for, the public. Specific topics, so maybe, and I do think they should be council-directed, although, you know, we can maybe have a, you know, a list from the directors that send it on up to the city manager, but it's something I think the council should direct, maybe at the first meeting of the year. We sort of give each commission sort of that, their, their work plan and, and send them off. Obviously, having commissioners on the dais, every council meeting is important, we should continue to do that. But just having sort of a, for the lack of a better word, a dog and pony show, where you just come and do a presentation, we need to do better than that. And, and when we talk about sort of like the potential for reforming the commissions, if, if the workshops work for us and the commissions, you have to think that they would work well for the commissions and the public. commissions and the public. So maybe the commissions, instead of having, you know, this specific meeting, they're having a workshop on whatever, right? Like, so we have to kind of reimagine and try to meet folks where they are. This is intimidating, nobody likes to come here, and, you know, even the commissioners are up here, everyone's down there. So I think we need to really think about how to engage the public in a more direct way, that's more comfortable, and maybe that is doing more things in the conference center where everyone's on that same level, and it's a little less formal, it's a little less in-your-face, and it's a little more collaborative and welcoming.
Thank you. Mayor Protom?
Well, I think we're all pretty much in collaboration in the sense of workshops are definitely very beneficial. People, obviously, there's a lot of conversations that come out, so I've really enjoyed them, especially to be able to have an understanding, a little bit deeper to, again, same level, about the concerns and issues that may come out in that type of arena of a workshop. Again, creates conversations. You know, one of the things I would like to see, too, is, I would like to have the commissioners almost be tasked with being able to bring stuff more to us of what's going on in maybe that district or an area very specific to the concern. So going back to what you were saying, Schwank, is just, I love that they would engage with the public themselves. I think it would just bring a lot more dialogue, I think it would bring a lot more of the issues that maybe are not coming out to the council to finally come up and arise, and maybe we can take, you know, action on some of those things. So I love this idea. I think it's really going to, again, cut time and just get to the job at hand and what we need to do for the city. So I love this idea.
Awesome. Any other comments from my colleagues? Madam City Clerk, would you like to summarize what you heard?
Let me go ahead and get Mr. City Manager to provide some comments.
Yeah, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Just kind of a clarifying question. Not surprised at all that you guys are united on sort of the workshop format, but let me ask and make sure I'm understanding kind of the direction. If a particular commission, well, the two examples that were used last year, we had specific agenda items for those workshops. Under that scenario, would the council consider that particular workshop the joint meeting for the year? That's one question. And if we didn't have a joint agenda item per se for, let's, I'll just call it the Traffic Commission, this council would be supportive of putting together the staff to put together the agenda that might qualify as the work plan for that respective commission, based on what we think you want them to focus on, and then that allow for a free-flowing conversation. Is that acceptable assumption? And if not, you know, I'd look forward to that direction, too, so.
I think, looking around, I think the assumption was yes on both of those. I think the consensus of this council seems to be efficiency. So yes to the joint annual meeting workshop would be that. If there's not an agenda item, staff would create that agenda for us. Any other comments?
Can I ask just a clarification, then? If, so how would, if a council member has something for, say, a traffic safety commission that I think is, you know, important, how do I get that on that agenda for the workshop? Is that something that gets run through a council meeting, or is it something I just bring to staff and say, put that on the, how does that work?
Yeah, maybe what we do is, we have a couple of, we definitely will have some items for all the commissions at the staff level, and we would propose those be put on. It's a tight agenda, it's publicly noticed, we get to those items, but then I would recommend you have kind of a catch-all, third item, if you will, that allows all five council members to bring anything and everything that they want the commission to focus on in the upcoming 12 months. I feel like that's acceptable, since they report back to the city council. This is kind of a supervisory review for the year, but it's also an opportunity to engage at the same level, like was mentioned. So I think we could capture it in an agenda, catch-all, city council direction, or something to that level.
Great, thank you. Madam City Clerk, can you provide us summaries to make sure that we got everything?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I think, especially after the city manager's clarifying questions, what I'm hearing for general direction is there is consensus that the workshop model definitely is the preferred way to conduct annual joint meetings versus the current model now, and it's going to take the place of annual joint meetings. In lieu of the existing joint meetings, we will have workshops. Those particular workshops will be on specific topics in addition to whatever their current work plan might be, and the council will actually direct those specific topics on a standing place on the commission's particular agendas. I also hear that direct public engagement should be a component of, as we're redesigning these workshops/joint workshops, and that this is probably something that we will be bringing back after we bring back the review on item number 13, just because it would directly tie into that. So, again, Mr. City Attorney, if that general direction is good with you, I don't feel like we need a motion.
That's good.
Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 15. Receive report regarding youth and government program and provide general direction regarding the same at the request of myself, Mayor Kalpas, and Madam City Clerk.
Okay, this is my last item for tonight, I promise. There's a lot of housekeeping this particular meeting. Okay, this one is a treat to bring back. Thank you, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Kalpas, for suggesting this particular one. Next slide, please. So, our city council has historically been very supportive and encourages us to promote youth engagement with city hall and local government. Current and former council members have worked with staff proactively to engage youth of all ages, everything from Read Across America, to apprenticeships, to internships, to the Young Women's Conference. And as the community grows, once again, our youth demographics have changed, and our related programs need to be reviewed and adjusted to ensure program effectiveness and resource alignment based on the needs of the participants. Youth and government, which is currently on hiatus, is one of those programs that is before you tonight to go ahead and review and get some general direction from the council. Next slide, please. So, again, our current program is on hiatus. It went on hiatus during the pandemic, but what the existing program that is on hiatus was, is participation was limited to the three main high schools at TBUSD. It was, TBUSD, as you know, is our only public school district covering the jurisdictional boundaries of the city of Temecula. Twenty-one students participated in the program, seven from each of the three schools. The students were all seniors in advanced placement AP classes, AP government classes. The AP government teachers decided which seven they were going to send to us. It was based on their own system, so it could be the highest GPA, an essay contest, whatever it was that they wanted to, applications. The program was conducted over two half-days, from eight to one each day. The first day focused on role selection and shadowing, and then the second day, there was a mock city council meeting and mock staff reports and all that. Both days included a student and staff debrief at the end of the day over lunch. Next slide, please. For council member selections, these 21 students, five of them were elected by their fellow students, the other 17, to go ahead and serve as council members. They did have to provide a campaign speech to all 21 students, and then we held a mock election, and the students receiving the highest number of votes served as mayor, and the other four served as council members. And then they were sworn in by a pretend city clerk as well. Next slide. The balance of the students actually engaged in a random selection process to serve as executive directors and related staff, and then the department directors provided an overview to all the students before they took off to their respective areas regarding operations in each of the departments for general knowledge purposes. Next slide, please. So essentially, you can see some pictures there, and then after students assumed their roles as elected officials or staff, they would tour city hall, they would then review organizational charts and role responsibilities to the community. The students would prepare for the mock city council meeting by reviewing some sort of a real-world topic. So one year, we had a soda tax, one, but whatever was a hot youth issue at the time. The staff students would prepare draft staff reports and conduct meetings with other department student staff members to make sure that their reports were good and their presentations were good. The council students would do their own research and figure out if there were any pre-existing thoughts on the topic in the community. And then each day ended with a debrief of lunch and a discussion on ethics and conflicts of interest. Next slide, please. And then the second day, again, was a mock city council meeting. We would actually have staff. In fact, Jonathan Hall is our resident public commenter, and would come in and provide some public comments, and we would go through that process. Council students would ask questions of the staff students, staff students would go ahead and provide presentations, and then we'd end the two-day program with lunch and a debrief of the full program. Next slide, please. Now, that all sounds great, but we received a lot of feedback from participants regarding the challenges. So, the first thing that we heard from participants was that the program was not inclusive, because it was limited to 21 students, limited to only seniors, limited to only AP government classes, and limited to only those three main high schools. The next thing we heard was, some of the student participants indicated that the program was too short, that two and a half days, you know, really limited their ability to engage in deeper learning about their local government, and they really got exposure to only, like, one department, as opposed to, you know, being more intimately involved with all of the other departments. Staff, for staff, this was very difficult, because it would take them out for two days, and if they had regional meetings or any of these kinds of things, it was very difficult. We would get mid-managers involved, sometimes we would have to get direct-line supervisors involved. So it's very difficult to take that, the 21 staff members, from executive directors to mid-managers, offline for 48 hours. Next slide, please. So we have a lot of opportunity for changing this program before we bring it off of this hiatus status. So, again, as I mentioned, it's been on hiatus. The good news is, is we now, with the 2020 census, have significant demographic information, and there is an opportunity to engage more youth in the program and strategically deploy our limited resources. There is an opportunity, so the other piece of this is, originally, the purpose of the program was to give these students familiarity with the, with city hall. Now, we also have increased that particular purpose to include the promotion of civil discourse, which is a way of discussing public issues in a respectful and constructive manner. And we also have this great opportunity to address future labor market shortages in the public sector, which we know are coming. Next slide, please. So, what we would like to do is, you know, the focus on high school students as primary participants in the program could remain the same, because it's directly tied to these three purposes of familiarity with city hall, promoting civil discourse, and addressing future labor market shortages. Students receive, it's high school students that receive their first meaningful education in civics, history, and government classes in high school. Before that, if they hear a mention of it, it's not at the depth level that it is in high school. In addition, this is where students preregister or register to vote. So their brain is going in that civil discourse and community engagement and all that, and it's a great time for them to become aware of their own local government. And then lastly, and perhaps the city manager and I have talked about probably most selfishly to us, this is when they obtain their work permits as well. So if we are thinking about engaging them in leadership roles with student clubs and completing their assessments through career counseling, this is the right environment and the right time for them to be considering public sector careers tied to the labor market purpose of our program. Next slide, please. Now, it's really important to know, based on the 2020 census, the school age population in our 110,000 is roughly 28.9%, so 29% of our current population is somewhere in that school age space. So, you know, zero to 18, based on the 2020 census. In addition to that, pursuant to TBUSD stats as of January 2022, a little over 26,000 students currently are enrolled with a primary address in Temecula jurisdiction boundaries. What that means, next slide, please. Actually, can we go back to the previous slide? I'm sorry. So approximately three-quarters of our student population is enrolled in our public school, in our public school district. So 72.7%, right? So 73% of the school age population in Temecula is attending TBUSD somewhere along the road. Next slide, please. And this is why, there's 32 different schools in the TBUSD system. So we've got 17 elementary schools, six middle schools, three comprehensive high schools, one continuation high school, one independent high school, a virtual school, one adult education, a charter, and, we, two charters, one that's K through eight and one that's K through 12. The ones that you see highlighted, those are the ones that are high school. We are only focusing on those three right now. So there is, just in the current school district, there's opportunity to expand to four more schools. Next slide, please. Again, generally speaking, 73% of Temecula youth are in our public school district. So given that, it just makes sense to continue to focus our limited staff and financial resources for this particular program in our public school district. Later on, if we want to expand outside, we can certainly do that. Next slide, please. So preliminary conclusions, based on these existing challenges, our stated purposes and our demographics, we should focus on high school students in general to meet those three stated purposes. We should focus on TBUSD for right now, because nearly three-fourth of our youth attend the city's public schools. We should focus on those three main high schools, but expand to include the continuation, independent, virtual, and charter high school. And we should focus on meeting, this is the most important kind of new piece here, meeting the students where they are by going to the schools on a rotating basis with intentional teams, so maybe an elected and appointed official, maybe an elected-appointed and a front-line employee at aligned times that are tied to their curriculum. So instead of us going to, having them come here and tell them what we think they need, we should be going to them in response to them telling us what they need. Next slide. So, our general steps to co-create this program is, if you, council concurs, we would like to meet with our TBUSD staff counterparts to provide an overview of this program proposal and seek their thoughts, and identify a program liaison for each of those seven high schools. Next, we would like to collectively meet with those program liaisons to discuss additional input regarding timing, curriculum alignment, and then update the proposal. Then we'd like to come back to the executive director leadership, talk about what we heard and what they need from a staffing needs perspective. And then we would like to bring the final proposal back to city council for approval and launch the approved program in the fall, September 2020, that should not be 2222, that should be 2025, coinciding with the new school year. Next slide. So, general direction requested, I know that was a lot, but we needed to go ahead and give you all of that information. And then, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you to facilitate answers and discussion through these five questions.
Perfect, thank you very much. If we could leave that last slide up while we all go through this civil discourse up here, that would be fantastic. First, I just want to say that, well, I guess first, if we can go back to the fall of 2022 and somehow retroactive this and start it then, that would have been phenomenal. But I think the original idea of bringing the students to city hall and having that, you know, mock city council meeting, if you will, was a great idea, but it was almost, you know, just for show, they weren't getting much out of it. And this way, with the new program that you've put together, it almost, we go to them, right? People learn when they're most comfortable. And when we go to their classroom and we go to their school, that's where they're go to their school, that's where they're most comfortable, so I think they'll have the best opportunity to take all the information in and learn and be comfortable in that environment. So I love that, meeting them where they are rather than them coming to us, and they'll probably save the school district some fees on busing kids all the way to City Hall. I also, I had one thing with the, the three-quarters of the kids in public schools, I would, I'm interested to see what my colleagues have to say, but I would like to look into also including the private schools, right? Because the, to me, it's not the students necessarily, their choice to be in public or private, but I don't think they should miss out on an opportunity to meet their local elected officials as well as the executive staff here in City Hall, just because they are in a private school. So I would like to include private schools in that, in the high school range, if my colleagues agree with me. But overall, I think everything that you hit on in that staff presentation is perfect, and I want to be more inclusive, I want to put less demand on staff and more, more on us to go to them, and I think this can be a very positive program moving forward. So I'm interested to see what my colleagues have to say. If we can start with Councilmember Schwenk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think I certainly agree with everything that I've seen and that whole co-creation. I do think Jonathan and even Brandon are probably going to miss the public comment portion, that was pretty off-the-hook, if you'd ever attended one of those meetings, they're kind of funny. But I think going to the students is, is better. We all probably do that anyways, right? Like, so in third grade is a local government unit for elementary schools, and I've gone to classes and spoke, but there's not a curriculum, there's not a focus, it's kind of like, oh, the teacher knows you, or there's a student in the class that knows you, and I, and I know my colleagues all get those same requests. So I think, and I, and I wrote this little blurb, and it says, "Build a program that serves K-12 students who are, who are in public, private, and homeschool programs." Because I think that it's important to engage the, the youth, right? And not just the seniors, right? Like, let's talk to the second graders and the third graders, because it, it's, it's going to be something that, you know, we don't know how we can, if, if an action that we take could meaningfully change someone's life, like, we should be doing it. And, and I know when we go and we speak and, and we, we talk to some of these classes or clubs, like, there's always one or two students that you know you made a really good impact on their lives, and, and that's really what we should be focusing on. So I think working with, you know, the school district and, and some of the other schools to create a program, to create a curriculum, to make it meaningful and tie in age appropriately to whatever they're learning at the time, I think this could be fantastic. I mean, I really do, so I'm, I'm really supportive for restarting this in a way that's meaningful.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Well, I've been involved in the program before it stopped, and it was a very, very impactful program for, I think, all twenty-one that showed up. So I, I do definitely in, in favor of pretty much everything that you said, and I do like the inclusion of homeschools. You know, if there's a homeschool group that's out there that we can engage with, there's a lot of students there that I think could benefit from this course, whatever you want to call this, but it's definitely very impactful, and I was really bummed when it stopped. So happy to see it breathe new life, so.
Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, so, you know, Mayor Kelfus, thanks for bringing this forward, because I think it's something that's been missing in the city for far too long, and, and I'm glad to see it hopefully come back. Yes, let's restart it. I, I agree, I'd like to see the private schools included in this as well. I don't know how you really engage the, you know, at-home learning in that, but it shouldn't be that hard, I'm sure there's enough groups out there that are able to kind of connect and, and help. The, I, I really like the idea of, of engaging and promoting public sector careers in the labor market, that is just so important, and I think there's really great opportunity there. So I really want to see that become sort of a hallmark piece of this. And the, one, one question I had, are we still planning on sticking with AP government classes, or are we opening this more broadly?
Yeah, we are, we are not planning on sticking with AP government. We are actually doing this a little bit more broadly because there are other classes that have an existing curriculum, including history classes, that we could go ahead and engage.
Okay, good, because I definitely was not taking AP government, and yet, here I am. So, you know, yeah, okay, good, good, that's all I had. Mayor Protem?
So just a couple ideas, homeschooling, yeah, it's heavy, being that homeschool parent and actually having a homeschool parent right out there in the audience is tremendous because I think it opens up the opportunity for kids to see maybe things that they don't always get to see, and there are so many PSPs in the area to be able to get that information out, and the homeschool community is very tight. So if this is something that goes out there, I think it would be amazing, an opportunity for, for kids. It's just thinking like what you said, like, I wasn't a government person growing up, I knew nothing about it, but obviously, there was a struck interest eventually, so this could be kind of that spark for some of these kids that, maybe they don't have direction, and then all of a sudden, they get to meet Mayor Kelfus, and bam, they're like, I want to be mayor, you know? So it can bring a lot. Yeah, that'd be good. So anyways, another thing, I'm thinking, could there possibly be, I don't know, every so often, I, I think I was talking to the city manager, and he was saying how much they really enjoyed having the kids here. Could we do a lottery with all the kids and bring certain kids out here to do something like that? I don't, that's a possibility, I don't know. But I do like having the kids here, I mean, I know we've all at some point in time brought kids through tours, I know, Stu, you do it, I do it, I love bringing people through here, but it just gives them an entire understanding of something bigger that they've never experienced before. So I don't know if I want to fully take that part away, so I don't know if we can do a lottery somehow, and we got smart people, we can kind of figure out how to do that. The other thing I, I had this vision a little bit, is if we do go to the schools, which I love too, I think a pep rally's, right? Kind of in, in a way, what about even bringing commissioners? You know, we talk about wanting to really bring that engagement in, what about having commissioners come in and being able to speak as well, to have that maybe a different type of engagement is something as an opportunity, especially if we're trying to bring younger people and younger opportunities and visions for, for our city. So that would be something else I would definitely think of, and I think that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to say that I love adding the commissioners to this, I think that is a great piece that, that we definitely should add. I don't want people to forget that they do have an open invitation every second, fourth Tuesday of the month to come to City Hall, if you haven't been, for all the citizens that haven't been. Any other of my colleagues, Councilmember Schwenk?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing, because that did, the, the idea of, you know, sort of not including City Hall, kind of like, that just piqued my interest, because we, we do that now, right? Like, we, we, I don't want to take that off the table, I want there to be an opportunity for, you know, a third-grade classroom to come, because they're doing local gov, and they come and they get the tour, they go to the history museum and they get to come here, but if we can, through this process, is build something into it, so it isn't just the council member going, well, this is our traffic wall, and it's really fantastic, you know, which, no disrespect to the traffic team and the traffic wall, it's really fantastic, and the kids love it, but we can make it more meaningful, and that's what I want, and we'll do scout troops and, you know, you name it, we still want to, I don't want to take that off the table, so if, if a school still wants to come, they can come, but we'd have like, some sort of, you know, an hour curriculum where we can block out and go, this is what we're going to do. I think that's more important than just, you know, seeing the traffic wall. Sorry, Nick.
All right, Madam City Clerk, I will go through one through five, and you tell me if there's anything different that you heard, how does that sound?
Just, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing. So staff, specifically me, have other jobs as well. So while we would love to include homeschooling and private schools and, and students from birth through eighteen, I'm wondering if council members are open to a phased approach so that we don't try to, we don't get like, the perfection be, get in the way of progress here, right? So we have an identified infrastructure through the school district that we feel that we can kind of work through and start. If we, and then, because that infrastructure already exists, we can make any tweaks that we need to if the program isn't working in year one. Then, can we try to, in phase two of the program, incorporate private schools and homeschools where we don't have a set identifiable infrastructure in place? Because it'll be easier for us to say, okay, this is the program, then we can figure in, does it make sense to have joint assemblies? Does it make sense to, you know, go to these, go to these homeschool once-a-month meetings? Like, we, we just need time to think that through, and I'm afraid that, you know, based on what you saw tonight, I don't, again, progress in order to meet that September fall deadline is going to be important. So can I get some consensus that council is okay with that, as the phased approach is good too? And then the program, when we bring it back with details, will include a phased component, we'll show you the work, we'll show you the math on how we would incorporate, and then same thing for visiting students at City Hall. It was never our intent to, to not have that. This is, this is a both-and proposal, right? So teachers are free anytime they want, parents are free anytime they want, we, we can even let them know at these visits that we are always open for, for tours, we can design a, some sort of a curriculum that somebody receives when they come on the tour, and that could be like, a voluntary base, if a teacher wants to bring folks through, or if a parent wants to bring folks through, or a bunch of high school students want to come through, we can arrange that separately, that's not a problem at all, but we can promote it through this program. So all of that, Mr. Mayor, if I can get consensus that that's okay too, that'd be really helpful.
Do any of my colleagues have anything against the phased approach?
I really want to say no, but I, but I recognize that, that the, the way that you've outlined it is the right way to do it and the Temecula way to do it, so I will say yes to that request.
Perfect, so is it will be best for me if I go through one through five?
Yes.
All right. Is there council consensus to restart the youth and government program? I would say yes, there is consensus. Is there council consensus on the three-pronged program purpose? Familiarity with City Hall, encourage civil discourse, and promote public sector careers for labor market? I would say yes. Is there council consensus to expand the youth and government program beyond the original twenty-one participants at three high schools to include students at all seven high schools? Yes, with the phased approach with the end goal of hopefully including everyone from birth to eighteen, as well as private schools and homeschools? And number four, is there council consensus on the approach to co-create a program with TBUSD to meet school district and student needs with implementation in 2025? Yes. And five other, I would just say, just to make it very clear, that we want to do both, go to them and have them come to us at City Hall. Did I miss anything else from my colleagues that you think of? Madam City Clerk, do you need anything else from us? All good?
We have our direction.
Alrighty. With that, we have departmental reports that we will receive and file, items for future city council agendas. Do any of my colleagues have any items for future agendas? Councilmember Schwenk, I see you smiling.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the monitor, and everyone goes. I do, so I think it's time for us to reimagine, so time being Temecula's innovative model for engagement, that was my fun little acronym, to reimagine our commissions and how we engage with the community, so I'd like to see that at a future council meeting.
I will second that, if that is a motion.
Yeah, that was a motion, sorry.
Absolutely, I second that.
Can I get some clarification real quick? Aren't we covering that in item thirteen already, or is this separate?
It's probably good since it wasn't specifically on the agenda, just to tie a bow on it.
Can, can we roll that into a staff report with item thirteen? Is that possible?
Yes, when we.
Just so we don't create two parallel paths on sort of the same topic area?
Yes, we will bring back one staff report with all the research, assuming Councilmember Schwenk and the secondor of the motion is good with that.
Yeah, and I'm good with that, and I checked with Peter early on in the meeting to make sure we had to do a separate, which we do, so.
Okay. Absolutely, that's been first and seconded, let's vote. That passes unanimously, do any of my other colleagues have? Councilmember Ron?
So, I've got a surprise for staff. No, actually, this is a good thing. You know, I, the senior master plan was written ten, ten years ago roughly now, and, you know, when I had brought that to the city council ten years, years ago, I remember going through this process where, you know, there was a proposal, and we were going to go out and have a consultant, right, the senior master plan, all that, and I said, no, this is, we have incredible talent pool right here in City Hall and wonderful folks, we can do this ourselves, right? And so we all rolled up our sleeves and put together a, a senior master plan. In the last ten years, though, I think we've checked a lot of the boxes off on, on what that plan was, and so I'm wondering, just with my colleagues here, if we could kind of revisit the senior master plan a little bit, see, you know, what it is we've accomplished from the housing, from transportation, from a lot of the things that were identified, and then ten years later, you know, are there, is there an opportunity for us to kind of revisit that, go back out into the community and have that dialogue again with, with folks to see, you know, what is it now as, as the community is evolving? And I know some things, you know, personally myself, that I'd like to see put on that plan, but, you know, to see, maybe revisit that and see if we can update that at some future certain term.
Just out of curiosity, would it be better under a workshop?
I think we did those, right? I, I, you know, I'm getting old.
So unfortunately, this is an item for a future agenda, we have three minutes for the requister to make their pitch, and a motion up or down, and then what I heard so far for the motion from Councilmember Ron was that he would like staff to bring back the senior master plan, status update, and additional general direction as needed when it comes back as a agenda item.
I'll second that. Yeah, okay. That's been first and seconded, let us vote. That passes unanimously? Do we have any other items for future city council agendas? Seeing nothing, we are getting the seniors involved, we're getting the youth involved, this is, this is looking brighten up. Next up, do we have a city manager report?
Nothing tonight.
Do we have a city thirty-five-year attorney report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you once again for the presentation. I wasn't expecting that, but I was most grateful for the kind words, and I was most humbled by that, so I appreciate it. And I want you to know that I do understand I'm never going to be able to live down the thirty-five years, I think it's been mentioned ten times in the last hour or so. But I'm good with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, and we're grateful that you're not leaving us yet either. And with that note, I will adjourn this into our next regularly scheduled meeting. Have a great night.